One discreet.
We have somebody more technologically advanced than I.
I did want to address real quickly, as far as the big picture is concerned, obviously, we've been trying to get ready for town meeting. We've had some other fairly pressing issues. I think we need to tackle that soon. If not, at our next meeting or perhaps the one after that, really bring it to the forefront here. Second thing relative to your questions, Selectman Bagdassarian, I believe, answered, provided his perspective on the questions at one of the meetings. I did see the email exchange between, I believe it was Kim and yourself, on the cable advisory committee charge. You made a public record request, basically, and so we honored that. And I think your commentary about needing a webpage on the town's website for the cable advisory committee, I think, is spot on. So I think we should take a look at doing that.
Let's see, I just want to make clear that there is no question that on August the 25th, Selectman Bagdassarian answered the four questions that I asked, or answered three of the four questions. I didn't ask Selectman Bagdassarian. I asked the entire Board of Selectmen.
That's right. And if I'm not mistaken, we did say that we would provide answers as we take a look at the big picture.
I understand. I just wanted to make clear that, yes, Selectman Bagdassarian, in fact, answered three of the four questions.
And I believe David Genero has also provided input on one of the questions, and you've received the commentary on, or the charge for the cable advisory committee. So we're almost there already, and we've not even addressed the big picture.
No, no.
Hopefully, we need to move on to our next speaker. Chuck?
Mr. Ford. How are they still? I agree with you, it should be on the website, the charge, the cable committee, by name and the way they do every department.
They should have their own page, and then the charge could be right there on the page, and the members of the committee and all that kind of stuff.
Right, their emails or phone numbers.
Dr. Charles Lutton, 126 Carrington Lane, Uxbridge, Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, citizens of Uxbridge. Edward and Sue Danus of 15 Pudding Street, Paul and Claire Messier of 28 Pudding Street, and Joseph Forte of 89 Upton Road brought ethics charges against me. They made these charges to the Board of Selectmen, to the Massachusetts Ethics Commission, the Attorney General's office, and Senator Moore on September 11th, 2008. I was unaware of these charges until September 30th, which happened to be my 48th anniversary. While having coffee, I received a call from Mr. Webster, investigator for the State Ethics Commission, first time I knew about it. In my opinion, I was disrespected by the Board of Selectmen, town manager, and staff due to the fact that they never notified me of these charges regardless of their reasons, even though Mr. Curis had time to communicate with the complainants by email on several occasions. And I understood a discussion for tonight's meeting was scheduled again without my knowledge. I was assured today by Ms. Myers that no complaint discussion is scheduled by the Board of Selectmen tonight. In that case, I will forego reading the charges in my answers, which I had planned to do. In the 48 years that I have practiced medicine, I have served in the Army as a lieutenant colonel, had a private practice of internal medicine, functioned as director of health and safety and medical director for several large companies, operated a consultant practice in occupational medicine. I have served as visiting lecturer and mentor to occupational medicine residents at the Harvard School of Public Health, as a member of the Massachusetts Healthcare Services Board of the Industrial Accident Board. I have never had my moral character or integrity challenged until now as a voluntary appointed member of a town board. I'm upset by this. And I have consulted an attorney, and we will take the appropriate actions regarding it. There are consequences to this, consequences for me, because when I apply for my license next year, I'm going to have to address these charges with the medical board. When I go for my malpractice insurance, I will again have to address these charges. They are not something that I take lightly, or neither should the town. I recommend, and this is after communication with the Attorney General's office, I fail to uncover any regulations on how to handle complaints in the state of Massachusetts. It's up to each town. I recommend that a procedure be developed on how complaints against citizens of the town of Uxbridge and/or Uxbridge town officials can be handled on a fair and equitable basis instead of running off to every department in the state. I have served on a committee that's handled complaints against healthcare professionals, and I would be pleased to serve the town of Uxbridge in developing a complaint procedure. Thank you.
Can I respond?
Chuck?
Mr. Lutton, I, as other members of the board, received a copy of that complaint. But ethics complaints are handled by the State Ethics Commission, not by the Board of Selectmen.
Actually, you're incorrect. They are handled through the town manager and the zoning board of appeals.
Ethics complaints?
Ethics complaints. And that's where they should start. And it was received, and I don't want to get into a discussion here tonight because of how upset I am. It was sent to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen chose to respond to it. That's why I'm here tonight, letting you know that I was unhappy about that, and there should be a definite procedure on how to handle them.
I didn't realize it was a response from the board.
Actually, I'd like to weigh in on that. When I received the complaint, in my time on the board, we've never received this type of ethics complaint. So I had no sense as to what the proper procedure was. So I exchanged emails with the town manager as to what the process is.
You couldn't have called me?
I don't know what the process is. What if the correct process was legally not have a conversation with?
Then I would not have been answering the complaint. To me, that's ex parte communication.
Well, okay. So was the gist of your communication acknowledging receipt of the complaint?
It was.
All right, that's fine.
Want to see it?
No, that's okay. I'll get a copy of it later. But to my knowledge, you'll have to enlighten me later, but the Board of Selectmen is not in charge of ethics violations.
And if they hadn't responded, I wouldn't have been here.
And as a public official, you are subject to the ethics laws, same as we are. In my time on the board, I have a draw full of ethics complaints, a draw full. I'm also carrier of a great many licenses of various kinds, and I have to disclose certain things. But to my knowledge, to my certain knowledge, there is nothing that needs to be disclosed versus an allegation or a complaint.
There is in the medical license.
Well, I'd like to see that.
Even though it is carried, and if it is no finding, I still must cite it and cite that there was no finding and give the character of it.
And even if it does not involve the profession under which it might?
Even if it does not involve the profession.
I'd like to see that. But I guess the gist of what I want to get across to you, Mr. Lutton, is if you're going to be in public office.
It's doctor.
Doctor, okay, sorry. You have to get used to it.
I agree.
Well, if you're going to be in public office, I'm telling you, anyone can file a complaint with the Ethics Commission.
Then I would like to offer my resignation from both the zoning and planning board. As of now, I will follow it up in writing. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment on one thing, Peter. My wife has to do the same thing that Dr. Lutton has to do every year, and she has to put on there, she's had a speeding ticket, anything, anything that comes up. She's in the dental field.
Is that right?
Yeah. Anything. You get a ticket, or, you know, anything. It has to go on there. It asks a question. So if she had an ethics complaint or any other kind of complaint, she'd have to put it on that form.
I find that hard to believe. I'm not doubting it.
That's true.
But it just seems completely outrageous, because anyone is free to file a complaint against anyone. I mean, the complaint is just that, a complaint.
Not when you take it to the level they took it.
I've had complaints filed against me with coffee sent to the Board of Selectmen, the police department, the senator, the governor, the attorney general, and the United Nations. And I have no way to prevent anyone from doing that. People have the right to file a complaint to anyone, anywhere, anytime.
I wasn't here challenging that. What I'm here challenging is that nobody in this town saw fit to tell me about it. They had close to three weeks, and they walked around me every day and chose not to tell me about it. That's my complaint to this board.
With all due respect, this is the first time I've seen you in months.
We have telephoned, we have mailed.
Your commentary was just that we walked by you and without saying anything to you. Again, anything that you're implying or construing was done out of ignorance on my part as to how this process needs to play out.
Well, I've taken care of it for you. You won't have to do it again. I'm done.
But there still is a process that I and the board, I think, need to be educated on as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I could raise the issue, under our old business this evening, under DBOs policies, this is something that would touch upon, number one, which we're going to be looking at this evening as far as notifying individuals when we receive information regarding the board. So I think that this is something that should come in further discussion.
That's a good point, Karen.
Thank you.
Please.
I'm Janet Lutton, Dr. Lutton's wife. I live at 126 Carrington Lane. And I'm here as an angry wife, an angry mother, and an angry grandmother. The people that live on Pudding Street and who have made this complaint don't even know He is, and true, I'm partial, I've known and loved him for 50 years, but the truth of the matter is that he is one of the most honest, well-educated, intelligent people I have ever known. And he doesn't have a single solitary cell in his body that is unethical. He would never do anything unethical. So for these people to make charges against him is ridiculous, in my mind. All of the colleagues that he's ever worked with would testify to this about Chuck. He's an amazing individual. The complaint said that we had an agenda, that he had an agenda. We did have an agenda. We moved to Uxbridge less than three years ago to live out our retirement years close to our children and our grandchildren. Chuck thought the town would appreciate the fact that he volunteered his knowledge, his expertise, and his time to the town. I have watched him spend hour upon hour upon hour reading and learning as much as he could about zoning and planning, as he has done with everything he's ever attempted. And for you, as a Board of Selectmen, to not notify him that a complaint had been made, never even considering the people who made the complaint, why didn't they just act like normal people and walk up to him and say, "Chuck, we have a problem"? No, they had to send it to the Ethics Commission, the Attorney General, the state senator. I mean, that, to me, is unreasonable. My grandchildren have said to me, and it's such a sad commentary, "Why don't the people in our neighborhood talk to us"? Because they come to our neighborhood and they see us outside talking to all of our neighbors, and if we have issues with each other, we talk them out, we resolve them. And I know you can't address the complaint tonight, but shame on you all for not letting Chuck know this. And shame on the people who made this complaint. If I were their mother, I would be ashamed of them. And I'm really sorry that this all had to happen the way it all played out. And the town manager, when Chuck did call her, when he got the call from the Ethics Commission, tried to blame it on our computer not functioning properly. He has a brand-new, three-week-old computer. There's nothing wrong with our computer. We still have US Mail, and we still have telephone service. So I am just appalled at the way Chuck was treated, and it has never happened to him in all of his professional years.
I would just like to say, we stopped at Lutton's reconsider for the work he's done for this town. Now, I'm sorry that had to happen to you, and I do believe we should do something about complaints received, because I don't think we are doing the right thing. And I do apologize, Dr. Lutton, I don't think this should have happened.
Mrs. Lutton, can you clarify, what do you mean by the town manager blamed your computer?
When she called Chuck back, I answered the phone, and she said, "I sent Chuck an email. Do you have computer issues?" Were her exact words.
Did she say when she sent the email?
No, but when Chuck called her back, he said, "Please go into your sent file and send me a copy of that." And we've had no trouble getting emails since then.
Okay, so have you seen an email from the email she's referring to? Did you actually end up then after receiving it?
Yes.
And do you know when it was originally sent?
The date was September 24th. And the complaint was received by, I believe, the Board of Selectmen on September 15th.
Yeah, I believe it was, it might have been dated the 11th, stamp received 15th or 16th, and was placed in the reading file. I personally don't think saw it until probably the 18th-ish. I mean, I'm just going from memory here. It was not immediately brought to my attention. Actually, the first I became aware of it was on receiving an email telling me that, "By now, you must have seen a letter." And that was the first, an indication that there's even a complaint had been filed. So at least a week had gone by before it even came to my attention, before I'd even seen it. And if the first communications that you guys had were the 22nd, roughly, around there, that's within a couple of days of at least when I was aware of it. So I apologize for not immediately, at least letting you know that it had come in. But again, I was acting just out of caution as to make sure I followed the right process. And so I'll follow in sort for this. I should have picked up the phone or emailed you directly and let you know that we had received a complaint. But again, I was just trying to move consciously and not take the wrong action that would cause downfall ramifications. So I apologize.
You know, my initial response when I saw the letter was to disaggregate the portions of it. There were two distinct things in there. One was an ethics complaint against Dr. Lutton. The second one was a zoning violation against, I guess, your son on Pudding Lane. So ethics violation, in my view, has got nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen, that's the Ethics Office in Boston. We have responsibility as the zoning enforcement officers to deal with the second after staff has done the staff work. So looking at it and the fact it was routed to the proper part of the staff to do the staff work prior to presenting it to the Board of Selectmen. And that portion of it should have been between staff and your son. And the first part of it, whether or not there was an ethics violation, is a matter to be adjudicated by the office in Boston, not the Board of Selectmen. So I'm not certain, you know, in the different parts of it, what I should have done at that point.
Well, I think the complaint made against Chuck, if you review the tape of the meeting that they were complaining about, there was no violation.
Well, that's not up to me to determine. That's the Board of Ethics in Boston to make that determination. I'm not authorized to make that.
Chuck offered to send a tape to the Board of Ethics, and they said, "No, that won't be necessary." But I think what happened was that the people who made this complaint were doing two things. They were complaining about our son, who happens to be their next door neighbor. They've been complaining about him ever since they bought their original property. And I was there the day they signed their, or made their offer, or whatever they did. And they had an issue that day with buying that property. "I buy this property in the minute," she said, "if that old barn wasn't there." And our son said, "I'm buying property because of that old barn." So from day one, she knew that old barn was going to be there, and it's been an issue with her for a lot of years. But how they mix that up with what Chuck was doing on the zoning board of appeals is just incredible. I mean, they are not related, if you review that tape. He did not mention.
That will play out. We do need to move on from citizens' forms this evening, but I certainly am sensitive to your comments about communications and notification. And again, you just have to trust me that it was me moving out of caution as to not knowing how to handle this. This is the first time since I've been the chair of this board that we've received an ethics complaint, not knowing how to handle it, you know, defer to staff. So I apologize, you know, if there's communication breakdown, but I do need to move on this evening.
I'd just like to say, we do need to look, I'm a little mad myself. In the reading file, the complaints will sit there for weeks, and we won't do anything with them. It's time to start looking into them. Somebody puts in a complaint, and we just leave it there.
But there are two aspects of it. What is it that is our action?
I think you should investigate every complaint.
It's the job of the Ethics Office to do.
No, I'm not talking about ethics. I'm talking about regular complaints.
If it's a zoning complaint, it's the job of staff to investigate that.
Not staff. Under the new zoning bylaw, it's the building inspector. That used to be.
He is staff.
Well, not really. He has a statutory function, that's not quote "staff."
I just think we should look into the complaints a little more than what we do.
Well, and again, Mr. Chairman, I think that this comes to why I have requested that we go over BOs policy. I think this, I mean, this is a perfect example of not when we don't know what the procedure is, or we don't have a procedure. I mean, things can blow up very quickly and have significant damage with it. And so that's why I know there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. But myself coming in, looking at this, there are fundamental things that I feel that are lacking in the foundation of what is built here as far as our town government. I mean, we are so lucky that we have not had an issue with personnel, because we have no personnel manual. We have no policy procedures for this. And so I really would like to stress how important it is for us to get the foundation of this town government in line.
If I may add to that, in watching your meetings at home many times, it often looks to me and sounds to me like the left hand does not know what the right hand is doing. I mean, it's just evident that you, as a Board of Selectmen, well, we don't know whether we should do that or not in the town management, well, we don't know whether we should be doing that in our office either. And it's very evident that there's a problem.
I can't disagree with you.
But it's not left not knowing what the right hand is doing, it's the left hand not knowing what the left hand is doing, and the right hand not knowing what the right hand is doing.
Point rotation, whatever.
No, but you bring up a very valid point. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it's something that needs to be addressed. And it is difficult. And as your husband knows, I mean, we're volunteers, we're trying to do the best we can with the resources we have. And this is one of the things that we do have to understand, that when we are voted into our position, it's our job to understand what we're charged with and the responsibility that we have, because.
It's a daunting responsibility.
It is, it very much is. And thankless.
And I lived with a man who has volunteered for many, many things and has done a phenomenal job. And to just not have him notified was, to me, a horrific experience.
I absolutely.
And the ramifications of it on his medical license.
Yes, I understand.
But if I'm not mistaken, though, whether he was notified or not, there still are those ramifications out there once the complaint has been made.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that goes back to the people who made that, and they will have to answer to that.
Right, okay. I would like to move on if we could, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. All right, under consent items, we've got three sets of minutes.
Can we put those off until later?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Unless, does anyone have any modifications to the three sets of minutes, otherwise it'll take us.
No, but I mean, I agree with Peter. I mean, even if it's only going to take five minutes, we.
Okay. It'll only take five, is there no change?
But could we go ahead and address the individuals that are here?
Yep, absolutely. Okay, public hearing slash scheduled appointments. 7:00 PM, Attorney Mark Kablak from Northwind Summerfield Development, water and sewer connection fees. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Mark Kablak. I'm an attorney with offices in Framingham, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Summerfield at Taft Hill Development, which is owned by my client, Northwind Partners of Massachusetts. And the principals of that entity are here tonight, sitting in the second row are George Yankowicz and Kevin Camo. We are here tonight, which is really kind of a culmination of a series of discussions that we've had with the town manager and with town council, regards the recent revisions to the sewer privilege fee and the various costs that now go with constructing and connecting to the sewer lines in the town of Uxbridge. Before I get into our particular issues, I just want to give this board a little bit of historic insight into this development. It's located off of Douglas Street. It is a 130-unit, age-restricted, which means over 55 occupancy development. The units are single-story, they are predominantly duplex units, and this project was originally approved by a zoning board of appeals special permit in 2004. With the project, there were a series of off-site improvements that were done, including in 2005, the construction of the sewer main in Douglas Street, which was an extension line of approximately 3,400 linear feet. In 2007, my clients negotiated an amendment to the special permit. This required adoption of an amendment to the zoning bylaw and the eventual inclusion of 15 of the 130 units to be income restricted. So not only are they going to be age-restricted, but 15 of the units are going to be income restricted. That resulted in a special permit amendment that was issued by the zoning board last year. 15 of those units will be age-restricted under the low or moderate income guidelines of the Department of Housing and Community Development, and once occupied, those units will count toward the town's list of the subsidized housing index. Five of those units have actually been constructed and sold, and 10 of those units remain to be built. There are 50 units in total, of which 10, as I just mentioned, will be affordable, that are yet to be constructed on the project. When those units are built, there will be an assessment of sewer connection fees, which is the reason for our. of sewer connection fees, which is the reason for our appearance here tonight. In my presentation, I want to distinguish what I would refer to as a set of legal questions, comments, and issues, and a different set of questions, comments, and issues that I would otherwise consider to be equitable as opposed to legal. You, I think, are well aware that the sewer privilege fee, or the fee that used to be assessed to a residential unit when they connected to a town sewer main, was $831 per unit. As a result of the fee structure amendments that the town initiated at town meeting, that cost went from $831 per unit to $3,000 per unit. Our question to the board, and this is, as I said, a conclusion of a series of discussions that we had with the town manager and with town council, our formal request to the board is to get a better understanding of what this board looked at as the Board of Sewer and Water Commissioners, what this board looked at when it determined that $3,000 per residential unit was the correct fee. The law, and this is one of the legal points I wanted to make, requires that the fee assessment be reasonable and proportional to the benefit that is derived from the fee. If you look at the September 7, 2006 memo from Copelman and Page, they bring home that point by stating that the assessment cannot be in substantial excess of the benefits received by the unit. Okay? The second kind of legal question in this, in this area is, why did the board impose what I call a ratable charge for commercial and industrial uses? Meaning that you assess the sewer connection fee for commercial and industrial uses based on the flow that it generates. There's a residential equivalency, and then that's multiplied by how much flow the commercial and industrial units produce. When there is no equivalency for residential units, meaning any type of residential unit, whether you're talking about the type of unit that we're constructing at Summerfield, which is a two-bedroom, age-restricted unit, there is no distinction between a unit like that and a four- or five-bedroom, single-family home. And when you look at the equivalency issue with respect to actual flow generation, Title V proposes that a unit of the type being built at Summerfield at Taft Hill would generate 150 gallons per day of permitted flow, because these are all two-bedroom units. They're all age-restricted, and so they qualify under the Housing for Elderly category under Title V. They're permitted at 150 gallons per day of sewage flow. Compare that to a four-bedroom, single-family home or a five-bedroom, single-family home. Those types of residential units would be permitted for either 440 gallons per day of flow or 550 gallons per day of flow. And so you have within the range of residential units three and perhaps four times the amount of sewage flow generated between units that we're constructing and units that might be constructed elsewhere in the town. This, this distinction becomes even more important when you look at the actual flows generated by these units. The units that we're constructing are all qualified as Energy Star units. They all have low-water usage appliances and plumbing in them. When we look at the water bills and the water meter readings on these units, while we're permitted for 150 gallons per day, the actual average generation is more like 100 gallons per day. And that kind of makes our point more poignant, we believe, which is that there should be some way to distinguish, in the same way that you distinguish commercial and industrial uses, there should be some way to distinguish residential uses in the assessment of the sewer cost connection fee. The equitable arguments are a little bit different. We, as I mentioned, did the connection, did the sewer line extension in Douglas Street. It was a $897,000 expenditure. Under the old sewer privilege fee rate structure, when a developer such as my client did an improvement like that, it got a discount on the connection fees. So that, over time, there was some way in which the developer recouped some of the costs for the off-site improvements that were performed. Because the Douglas Street main, as you know, while it serves our property, also serves all of the other residences along Douglas Street. There's no type of credit structure in the new fee structure. In other words, we, we've lost, on the technical reading of the new regulations, we've lost the ability to get credit going forward for future connections that we make for the remaining 50 units. There's a reliance factor here. As I mentioned to you, the original special permit was issued in 2004. The line was put in in 2005. We, as recently as last year, negotiated the designation of 15 units as affordable units. All of it has been in the spirit of cooperation. All of it has been underwriting what the costs and benefits were of the development. And when we did that underwriting, it was based on the prospect that the fee structure would be fair and reasonable and that that credit provision would remain. And so while there's no absolute right to a grandfathered protection under this law, in the same way that there is in zoning, for instance, there really is an expectation on my client and others who have plans such as ours, that there be some continuance or extension or grandfathering of the credit provisions that used to exist. The, the units that were designated in 2007 as affordable units, they were done under what's known as a local action unit application to the Department of Housing and Community Development. It was not technically a 40B. It was one where, on a cooperative basis, the developer, under the zoning amendment that occurred last year, was willing to restrict 15 units for lower, moderate-income households. Typically, when a developer does that, either in the context of a 40B application or in the context of a local action unit or LIP application, there is a relaxation of the fee structure for those affordable units, because the underwriting of the affordability comes from the private sector. It's from the developer. It's from the, of the 130 units, 15 are affordable, so 115 are subsidizing those 15. And typically, in that scenario, the town relaxes the fees for those affordable units. Again, there's no way, under the current regulations, for the $3,000 assessment to be relaxed, even with respect to the 15 affordable units. This particular project is one that is overall a benefit to the town. You're, you're bringing in folks who, by very definition, are not able to have children in the units. These units are for 55 and over. It has no impact to the school system. You're bringing in a tax base where there is a minimal drain on municipal services. And in addition, the project has generated, in terms of other fees over the course of the years of construction, fees to the town of approximately $565,000. And that's a lot of money. When we look at the differential between the old sewer privilege fee amount and the amount that we'll pay even for the remaining 50 units, it's an additional $160,000 more. So it's a considerable difference, particularly for a project of this size. And so what we would ask the board at this time is to have a more thorough discussion about the fee structure and whether there should be an equivalency standard applied for residential units along the lines of what the town has already done for commercial and industrial units. And secondly, whether there should be some concession with respect to the affordable units. Now, I know that the fee structure has been set. I know that bills have been issued under that fee structure. I would ask that, going forward, until this is reevaluated next year by this board, that the board would entertain abatement applications and that our discussion along the line of what I've just requested leading into next year might lead toward a further amendment of your regulatory structure.
I'd like to just comment before I open up to the board. First, if, if you've followed this process at all over the past umpteen years, this was a pretty laborious process to get us to the point of the new rate structure. You know, we, we literally spent several years and with conflicting legal advice from, from the state and from town council, and depending on who you talked to on what day, what was legal, what wasn't legal, relative to abatement charges and all that. It's an incredibly complex issue. And I think what we felt we arrived at was something that was, you know, legally sound. At the worst case, legally sound. And at the best case, legally sound and fair to everybody. Okay? Now, you know, since bills have gone out, obviously, we've had some pushback in situations like yours, or there's another agenda item, you know, this evening to address different versions of, of exceptions or perceived exceptions that this board is going to have to address. Clearly, anyone has the right to, you know, file an abatement request. And as you indicated in our, you know, annual rate-setting hearing process, we can, we can change this and fine-tune it and tweak it. But I want to assure you first, I mean, there was just incredible amount of energy was put into this, you know, by, by, you know, a couple members of this board, but also prior boards before, you know, Mike and I were even on the board, had been looking at this for, for several years. So it was not done, you know, haphazardly. And we tried to strike something that, that kind of addressed, you know, the town's needs, you know, addressing what had been a, you know, 20-plus-year-old fee structure that had never been, you know, changed from the date of inception, and trying to, you know, factor everything in to come up with something equitable. So there are going to continue, I would imagine, to be, you know, situations like these that this board needs to take a look at as Water and Sewer Commissioners, so.
I would agree that our particular development is unusual for the average residential mix of units in the town. And perhaps, you know, because of that uniqueness, it deserves some unique treatment. I would also say, Mr. Chairman, that I saw recently, I think it was by your finance director, a memo that was very well-prepared with respect to the CIF portion of the fee structure. And I'm wondering if we couldn't get something similar along that line with respect to the fixed connection fee assessment.
Okay. Do you want to put the essence of your question in writing, just so that there's no miscommunication whatsoever?
Yes, I can, I can follow up with a letter in writing. And I'd like to kind of continue this dialogue with the board along the lines of trying to reach a more, what I think is a rational and fair approach that would, that would not just be applicable for our project, but any other, you know, age-restricted or townhouse-type development. You know, the discrepancy gets even more distorted if you were to have, for instance, what we call a multi-family building. These are townhouse structures. They're duplexes. And so, you know, as you go along the development, they're laid out across the entire acreage. But you could have a situation under your current regs where you have a standalone building that's, you know, four stories and contains, you know, 20 to 30 units. Under the current regs, each one of those units would trigger that $3,000 fee. And so the single connection into the sewer main gets multiplied by 30 or 40 times, which again, seems to be kind of a, you know, a further distortion of how the regs would be interpreted under their current wording. But I will follow up in writing with the request, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. And I hope we can kind of continue this dialogue toward reaching something that is a little bit more equitable.
Gary, did you want to say something?
I mean, the thought that's coming to my mind, Mr. Chairman, is that the majority of the board was not sitting at the time that these rates went into effect, and therefore, we, we did not have any input. We're now enforcing it. And I understand that you've said that a lot of, you know, time and effort went into it. However, now we're seeing how it's now being applied, and then there are situations that are raising questions regarding the system that was put into place. What would be the procedure, I guess is what I'm asking, and is there a way for us to maybe go back and readjust the structure? Take another look at it and decide? Well, we, maybe you didn't have all the information at the time that you made some of the choices that were made regarding some of the fee structures. I mean, the one that's most blatant, that just pops out, is the issue of a multi-unit building. I mean, a 40-unit building would be charged $120,000, whereas a, a commercial building that's running 10,000 volumes of water is only going to pay $90,000 for their hookup fee. So it doesn't, you know, they're going to be using a lot more water than the 40-unit, but yet they're being charged a less fee. So they're using more of the resource and paying less money for it. To me, it appears, just looking at the numbers, that the residents are therefore taking the blunt of the cost in some of these structures. And it kind of goes to the other issue of the abatement. And I understand the reason why having a set fee when you're looking at the timeframe, but it may be more beneficial for the residents of the town if we look at a actual flow and use charge versus an actual flat-rate charge if we're finding that it is not being equally distributed throughout the town. And I, I don't know the answer to that, but these are just some things that--
Yeah, I know that David's done a tremendous amount of work on this along with former DVW Superintendent Bemblera. And, you know, including, you know, survey work of other communities as to how, how they're handling it. We looked at a number of legal precedents as to how these things are handled as well. And it is, it's, it is incredibly complex. Much more so than I ever would have dreamed it could be.
Right, and I understand that. And I think that one thing would be important, I think, in, in looking at a review of it, would be, where is this town going? What are the next, what type of communities are we looking to build in the next five, 10, 20 years? If we're looking to build just single-family homes, then it may not be beneficial to change the structure. But if we're looking to build more units like Summerfield, then it may behoove us to look at a different method.
There's more than Summerfield.
Right, I know there's more than Summerfield. But you understand what I'm saying. It just depends on where the, the intent of the town to go.
Peter?
As I understand it, the gentleman has agreed to send us a memo regarding your suggestion--
Yes, yes.
Which, you know, would be helpful, because then we can use that to formulate things. However, just a couple of points. You made mention of the disparity between some of your units in flow versus other homes. And you based that on the DEP 350, 150 gallons a day for your units--
Correct.
Instead of the 300 and so forth. I remind you, those are design criteria. And as you pointed out, the actual flow is substantially less than that.
Yes.
But that's true with all residential structures, not just yours. As to the equity involved, it's true that a multi-unit building would, if it was 20 units, they would have 10, 20 fees. That's how it works. I had a building in Douglas. That's how it works. I was charged for 14 units, because that's how much I had. So that's not unusual. That's not unique to the town of Uxbridge. Insofar as industrial uses or commercial uses go, the days are largely gone where industry or commercial uses use a lot of water. They used to use processed water when it flowed through. They don't do that anymore because of the cost of water and the requirement of big cleaning. So you don't have a big disparity in water, water usage. But we have to all remember that any accommodation made to you is made up by others. There's no magic. So a $10 debate to your clients is, in aggregate, a $10 increase for others. So our, you know, we have to keep that in mind.
Absolutely. And I think that gets back, excuse me. I think that gets back to my initial question, which was, while I'm sure that this board and the boards that preceded it did a substantial amount of work to come up with a number of 3,000, what I'd like to get, you know, from your finance director, if possible, is to, you know, what that calculation was. Because I think-- Because I think that's the premise that we initially need to understand, uh, to determine, you know, whether the cost is reasonable and proportionate to the use. And from that premise, then you're, you're right. Maybe some of my arguments or comments really don't hold water, uh, you know, but perhaps...
The fee, as I understand it, is not a function of the use. The fee is a function of the cost incurred.
Correct.
Allocated or appropriated appropriately to the different uses.
Right. The, you know, the, the fee should be, there should be a nexus between the fee and the use.
And the cost.
And then, and then what I wanted to do is understand that.
Okay.
And then from that, my second point was, um, assuming that is correct, the town also undertook what is an, what is in essence an equivalency standard based on flow for commercial and industrial uses. And I think that's, you know, it's equitable to do that, but didn't do the same thing for residential. And I think in part is because the town of Uxbridge, you know, 99% of the time is talking about single-family home construction. Um, the type of use that we have is really kind of unique to the town up until this point. And when you, when you look at two-family, age-restricted duplex units and the flow that's generated from that under Title V, um, there is a marked difference, even under the Title V flow, between something like that and a three, four, or five-bedroom house. The same way that a, uh, industrial use might generate 1,000 gallons per day of water, it gets assessed a different connection fee than an industrial use that's targeted to generate 3,000 gallons per day of water. In other words, the town, you know, this board...
I'm not sure that we do that.
You, you, you do. You use, you use what's called the, the residential equivalency.
Yes, I understand.
And you, you, you look at the target use under Title V for that industrial use, and then you divide that by 330.
Okay.
So that if a, if a, if industrial use is generating 1,000 gallons per day of water, it gets assessed roughly three residential equivalents.
Yes. But I'm familiar with those DEP tables. And I'm also familiar with the reality that they bear little relationship to the actual usage. As you know, design criteria is not the same as actually, we, we design buildings for a 50-pound, uh, per square foot load, but the actual load on residential structures is substantially less than that. But we design it for a certain use.
I understand, and I agree with you.
And some of the fee, even though, for instance, um, you know, we pay for an ambulance service as part of our taxes, we also pay, if we actually use the ambulance, but some of what we pay through taxes is the availability of having an ambulance available to come to our aid. By the same token, we run sewer line to a particular house and we size it with a certain capacity. You may not use that, but if you do, the capacity is there.
Correct.
So those are all the things we have to take into consideration. The, the rock under which we hit our heads is that the, the monies have to come from the uses of the system. So a, a rebate here is equivalent to a sur, a surcharge over there.
It's a zero-sum game, as they say.
Exactly.
Yes, I understand. Um, I'm just asking to better, to, to get information so that I can better understand the initial 3,000, to get the board to at least consider the request for the same equitable proportion of fee that it does for commercial and industrial. And then just to consider some of the other kind of equitable issues that apply specifically to our project, like the fact that we put in the Douglas Street line, like the fact that we've already generated a half a million dollars in fees to the town, um, like the fact that we, you know, apportioned 15 of these units as affordable units on a cooperative basis with the town last year. Those things are more kind of equitable and project-specific, worthy, I think, of discussion, but at a different level.
Agreed.
Just have a question. Was there, without getting too in-depth, but was there a reason why you chose to do the affordable housing as far as cooperation with the town and not actually go 40B?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's actually quite complicated. The original permit, uh, in 2004 was granted to, uh, the predecessor to my client, and that was subsequently called into question, having to do with the issuance of that special permit for the zone in which the development was occurring. Um, the, the negotiation that took place was a process by which we amended that district to, uh, take care of the arguable shortcomings in the special permit and satisfy the town's need to generate that, uh, affordable housing figure for the SHI index.
So it benefited both, is basically what you're saying?
Well, I think if you...
It helped out the client and helped out the town?
I think if you ask my client, getting, getting the clean special permit was certainly a benefit, but I don't think it, it thought that it was coming out of the process, um, any better than when it went in.
Okay.
Well, I mean, there was town meeting action that essentially allowed the, that particular use and that, you know, for that sub-development. So, um, you know, had something catastrophic happened, uh, technically they would not even have been able to rebuild units had, you know, units been destroyed, had town meeting not taken that action. So it, it was a, you know, it was a, I think, a good partnership there.
Well, the way I'd like to look at it is that what has been a very cooperative, uh, relationship up until this point would have probably gone completely 180 degrees in the different direction. But we were able to hold it together. I think we achieved something last year that was beneficial to both. Um, but it was done making a calculation about going forward, and then, uh, this, uh, fee increase didn't quite fit without calculation.
Well, and, and I guess it's the reason why I asked, because when you were talking about it earlier, you said that, um, because you did not go the 40B way, there's no way to, um, like, reflex those fees that you're now being charged now. And I guess my understanding is if you were 40B, you would have, you would have an actual different avenue than you actually have because you did the cooperative route with the town.
Well, that's true. I mean, the zoning board does have much more authority under 40B to, um, to grant waivers with respect to all town regulations, including fee structures. Um, and that's correct. Uh, arguably, uh, the zoning board did not have that same power with respect to these local action units because it was not a 40B permit. Uh, they didn't technically have the ability to waive. Um, my point is, I think a, a more general point, which is that, um, you know, just generally, when you're, when you're building affordable units, because it is a private subsidy, uh, the town usually does relax its fee structure with respect to those units.
Let me make one final point. Uh, because you tied into Town Sewer, in fact, Rand Council here, you spared the $12,000 to $15,000 dollar cost of private septic systems.
Correct.
On each of those.
Yep, absolutely.
So presumably that was a benefit that you looked at.
Absolutely.
And considered all of them.
There's no question that fees need to be paid.
Yeah.
And I thought that the, um, finance director's memo with respect to the CIF assessment is a good one. Um, you know, there's, there's, you know, there are three charges at stake here. There, there are the normal usage fees, the CIF calculation, and the connection fee. We're really only here to talk about the connection fee, and we absolutely know we have to pay a fee. Um, we're just trying to probe into what the fee should be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get that memo to us?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, auctioneer permit application, Frank Bellew of New Hampshire for an event on November 1st, 2008, at 5:15 Douglas Street. Is Mr. Bellew here? No? Okay. Oh, yeah. Do you want to come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Frank Bellew, the owner of Frank Bellew Auctioneers out of Pittsfield, New Hampshire.
And you're applying for a, uh, auctioneer license for just a one-day event?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. Okay. And has the staff checked everything out?
Mm-hmm. And there is a copy of, um, this is governed by Chapter 100, Section 10. And there's a copy on the right of the statute there.
I, I believe I included my license with the application.
Yeah.
Sorry. The only question I would have for the board, I didn't realize that from the time that, that I have submitted the, the permit, that it would take this long to go, go through. If I had to push that auction back a week, would it be a big deal? Could, is it something that I could amend through the, the town manager? Or do I have to come back in front of the board? Um, normally it's, in, in other cities, we've just submitted the permit and...
I don't think we necessarily need to make this just for that one, that, that one-day event, do we?
There's a cap on the number that you can hold under a, um, special permit designation. So I think it, as long as it doesn't exceed that number of auctions.
You mean, is it, oh, there's a certain number of auctions we can allow on a certain day?
Over a certain period of time. If that number's exceeded through a single permit, this is a special permit, there's another type of permit that needs to be applied for. But you're not talking about adding the number of events.
No, what, what I'm talking about is because of advertising and things of this nature, I might have to push it, push it back a week. I'm not sure yet. Um, I've, I've just got to see.
You know, a motion, something effective, you know, approving a license, uh, for an auction to be held no later than, would be two weeks after that, November 1st?
That's fine.
Something like that?
Excellent.
Okay. Any, uh, further discussion?
Uh, just to clarify, when you say equipment, um, it's a little quid, large equip?
Could be anything from an excavator to a generator to a snap-on socket set.
All right, and hours of operation starting at 10:00 AM?
Yeah, and we're normally done by, uh, 3 o'clock. And, and looking at that site, I, I don't believe that you'll need any, any police protection. We should be able to get everybody off the road if, uh, as we go forward with that, if that becomes a, a, a problem, or I think it's going to become an issue, I'll sit down with your police chief and, and get a detailed officer.
Okay, so a motion in the second, uh, to grant this license for an auction to be held November 15th, 2008. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
The best time to go to an auction is just before they're closed, when they want to get rid of all the stuff they're giving sale.
And a lot of the buyers have already left.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, we get Tom Andrews' report in our packets. I don't see a need to, to go through it, um, right now in this forum unless there's anything particular that anyone feels needed to discuss right now. Um, I think we should move on to the next agenda item if we could. And that is to, uh, consider water and sewer abatement request by Neil Christensen, uh, continuation of a couple meetings of discussions we've had, uh, and this continuing from September 22nd of '08. Uh, there was information in our packet. Uh, we had advised Mr. Christensen to, to see what it would take for him to have his property declared a single-family property. Uh, we give information in our packet saying that he does not wish to go that route. Um, so essentially what we're, you know, the abatement request that we're considering is whether, um, we should, uh, grant an abatement request for a three-family property that's being used by one family, you know, one extended family, um, but with no formal, uh, assessor's designation that it is indeed just a one-family unit. So what's the board's pleasure?
That's a tough one, because I can see a line flowing down to the continent.
Yep.
Of people in that situation. You know, you have sympathy for the person involved, um, but then you say, what are we letting ourselves into?
I mean, if it's, right, if it's a three-family.
Right.
If it's a three-family, there's only one person living in each unit, and arguably there's probably smaller than the majority of the families in the town, you know, with one person in each of those.
Yeah, but the, the point is the designation of the structure.
Correct, right. He, he, exactly. And I think that that's...
...what we're dealing with.
Right.
I mean, as much as government likes to be a nanny, we don't have the authority to go peeking through windows to see what is the family composition in every house in this particular town.
You mean, we haven't appointed a window-pick yet?
Uh, yeah. I hope not. I hope not. I mean, you know, there are, in my case, uh, it's a two-family residence, was being charged as a two-family resident, and yet it's a single extended family in there.
So Mike will be next with this abatement request.
I'll be the next one with the, with the abatement request.
I bet, you know, a apartment's empty for a couple of years, and we fix them, I'm still getting charged the water and sewer for the empty apartment.
But if you ever go to rent it, there's something else you still, you still have.
Yeah, sure.
If he does this, he won't have another two.
I mean, the objective criteria is the nature of the structure.
Right.
The structure is a two-family structure. It's charged a certain way. It's a three-family structure, it gets charged a certain way, um, regardless of, you know, the composition of the families in it. So I'm, I'm disinclined to open the door, most likely.
Any other comment, Karen? No? Well, we, we have an abatement request, so the, the appropriate action, I think, would be...
A motion that we deny the abatement request based on the information given.
Second. Any further discussion? Uh, I, I do just want to weigh in that, um, I agree with Mike's comments relative to, we don't want to be a nanny state, but if we were to allow this type of abatement, we would be almost forcing ourselves to become a nanny state, you know, because it, it's up to the individual property owner then to inform us when the use of that dwelling is changed back to its original intended use, which was, you know, three-family dwellings. Okay.
I mean, I, I think that the point is, is if, I mean, a possibility for the town to look at, which could then change the situation, you know, unfortunately we're not there, but we have single families and we have multiple families. We don't have in-law apartments, we don't have in-law suites. So there's going to be situations where, you know, unfortunately, you're either one or you're the other.
But even this particular case, this is clearly a multi-family, though.
Correct, right, but, you know, if...
Andy wants to keep it that way, even though he's being used as a single family, so...
Exactly.
For his benefit, for his future.
Right, so, I mean, you're going to have situations where you're going to kind of in a sense have people who, because they wanted that in-law situation, that they made it then a two-family, um, because there was no avenue in between until the town changes that, um, I think that we are kind of stuck with what we have, you're a single family or you're a multiple family. One, two, three, four, whatever the situation may be.
Again, Carrie, under the new definition of family, remember, any number of individuals living together.
You mean hippies?
So, yes, absolutely hippies. Hippies and yippies and schmippies.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of denying the abatement request?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda, uh, well-filled land acquisition by the town, considered proposal by Fred Hutnick and his counsel attorney Cove and/or attorney, uh, attorney Hugard. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Uh, yes. Chairman, um, and the board, uh, my name is Joe Cove, and I represent Fred Hutnick, and Fred's son and partner is with me tonight, Gary Hutnick. Um, the board may be familiar, there's quite a bit of, there's been a substantial history here between the town and Fred regarding purchase of a well-field, um, property that he owns, um, off of, uh, West River Road and Hartford Avenue. Um, you may be familiar with the area. It's off of My Way, Eric Drive. And the location is approximately 11, 11 and a half acres. I have a, I have a small sketch here of, of the area for you, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, please.
I can, uh, send it out. Yes, that's, it's, it's very low-tech, uh, very low-tech, but I think, I think it serves the purpose. The, the area that you're looking at is on the side of the West River, uh, West River. It is part of a subdivision of the, the, uh, marginal part of a subdivision known as West River Estates. Beginning in 1988, uh, the location was investigated as a public water supply by DEP and was tentatively approved at that time. Further engineering services, further engineering studies were made, uh, on behalf of the town. Further engineering services, further engineering studies were made on behalf of the town, leading up to a proposal between Mr. Bumbara and Mr. Hutnek, which was actually voted on by the town in 1996 to accept the location. At that time, it was 8.9 acres. What you're looking at today is 11.9 acres. But anyways, at that time in 1996, the town voted to acquire it, and rather uniquely, if I may say so, the town voted to issue to Mr. Hutnek a municipal bond, that is, a bond from the town to serve as consideration for payment of this. And I'll talk about why we're looking at a municipal bond in a minute. For various reasons, probably they don't concern us today, the deal did not go through. That was 12 years ago. Today, the town again is interested in that location. Mr. Hutnek has developed a subdivision in that location, which you can see, it's about a five or seven lot subdivision, which is paper-only. It's an approved subdivision, but it's a paper subdivision today. The proposal that Mr. Hutnek has discussed with former DPW director Larry Bumbara, and I believe former town engineer Mr. Priest, Urban Priest, was to sell to the town 11.5 acres, 11.9 acres, which is the area that you see so vividly colored in red, and to discuss various payment methods. The, a couple of reasons, a couple of reasons for the 11.9 acres. The radius that the DDP requires is approximately 400 feet from the wellhead. The area that you see there accomplishes that radius distance. The town is, additionally, the town is, the town now has an eight-inch water main off of Eric Drive, which would serve as a conveyance conduit into the remainder of the water system in the town. And more importantly, today, there is a three-phase electrical conduit on West River, sorry, on Hartford Avenue, which goes by there, it's about, probably less than 2,000 feet from the well locus, which will serve to operate the pumps. Basically, it is a low-cost, it would be a low-cost installation for the town, because you've got all the necessary conduits that you need. Mr. Hutnek proposes the following, and I believe this does not come as a surprise, we have bantered this back and forth with town manager Mrs. Myers. We are suggesting that the town consider purchasing the location for a flat $500,000, cash payable at closing. Or alternatively, alternatively, Mr. Hutnek will accept the bond, a bond of the town, payable over 10 years, the total payments to add up to $650,000. That would be, that would be an annual payment to Mr. Hutnek of $65,000. Now, the advantages, and why we're talking about this, we have, in 1996, I discussed this procedure with the director of the Bureau of Accounts, at that time, Mr. Johnson. And this is something that the town can do. It is an advantage to Mr. Hutnek, because a percentage of the annual payment going back to him comes back as municipal interest, which is tax-free. Additionally, we, Mr. Hutnek, is able to pay the capital gain on an installment basis over 10 years. The advantage to the town is that the debt service on this does not drastically impact your levy limit in the year of purchase, and you are able to extend the time period over a period of 10 years, rather than inhibiting your current cash allocations. So I'm suggesting that that's a, that's a sort of a mutually beneficial arrangement. Now, we can talk in more detail about the precise number of the bond, but given today's market, we don't know what the interest rate is going to be out there, okay? Probably, it will be a beneficial rate to Mr. Hutnek and to the town, okay? So I can't tell you today the exact figure that the consideration will be, but in matters of this nature, I think, it's easier to discuss what the 10-year payment history is going to look like, and then we can work out the details on the exact amount later. Probably, it'd be less than 500,000, maybe more than 500,000, I'm not sure. And I'm suspecting that Mr. General will be able to assist us in this calculation. But basically, that's what we're looking at. Couple of other things. The site continues to be, continues to be, to maintain its approval, because nothing has been done there since between 1988, 1996, and today. Additionally, additionally, the site continues to have a safe yield of about 600 gallons per minute, which is a substantial, substantial site for public water supply. That's well over 100,000 gallons a day. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'm happy to address any comments or questions your board may have on this.
Normally, something like this at town meeting would be spearheaded by the superintendent of DPW.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we don't have such a person. So somebody's going to have to get up at town meeting and make the case. Now, you talk about the prices won't be determined right now, but at town meeting, we either appropriate a sum certain or a sum not to exceed. And politically, it's always easier for people to work with a sum certain, rather than a not to exceed, because then you have to give them a little bit of leeway. One of the points that I hope will be made at town meeting, because you're going to have to convince the people who are going to pay the money, which are the water and sewer users, and as you've been here this morning, earlier this evening, so you know what they're faced with already. But the point has to be made that this well, this aquifer is separate and distinct from our other aquifer, which is on the Blackstone, not Blackstone River...
Just on the Blackstone.
Mumford River, and this is on the West River. So they're separated, which means that if we lose one, we have this as a backup. And that's going to be it. I mean, your sales job is not at the board's selectmen's meeting, the sales job has to be at town meeting.
Yes, and thank you for raising that point. But I think that the board has a couple of decisions it has to make. I mean, first of all, does the board want to acquire this outright by direct purchase? We're happy to, we're happy to take the money at time of closing. On the other hand, does the board want to consider the option of 650, payable over 10 years, in equal annual installments of $65,000 a year? I mean, that's, that is a choice that the board is going to make, and depending on how the board feels about it, I assume that would be the motion that would be made at town meeting, to appropriate X amount of dollars, $500,000, to purchase this property, or to borrow the sum of amount to be determined, over, and to issue a bond of the town, the full faith and credit of the town, to the seller of the location.
Well, I think if we were to issue a bond, that becomes an obligation to the town.
Yes, it does.
At that time, the whole amount.
Yes.
Rather than a installment sale.
Right.
Which would accomplish the same thing from your client's point of view, because he would realize gain on the money when actually received. From the town's point of view, we wouldn't be, well, I guess we would still be obligated for the sum total of payments.
We would.
So I don't see a great, great difference there. And of course, we don't have half a million dollars cash, unless I pass the hat around at this meeting.
Today's a bad day for me, Peter, sorry. I left my wallet at home. No, but I think, yes, and I think that you very appropriately state that. I mean, if you were to buy this cash at closing, you could either, you could either raise and appropriate, which I don't know what, you know, what your budgetary outlook looks like, or you could borrow the money and pay, on the general market, as Donnie Frank says, the credit market, and you could borrow that money today and pay the cash to Mr. Hutnek, but you will still have to pay interest over a period of, you could go up to 20 years on this facility to borrow. You will have to pay that to your lender. And that's perfectly acceptable to us, but I'm offering a third avenue. We will, instead of having to borrow the money from the bank, whoever your lender is, we will, we will finance you, because we get an advantage. We get, we get a reduced annual capital gain payment, and any interest that you pay us is exempt from state and federal taxes.
Essentially, a self-financed mortgage on those in layman's terms.
Yes, except, it's even better, because the interest that's payable to the mortgage, to the mortgagee, the person who holds the mortgage, is exempt from federal and state taxes. So I mean, I think that, I think that gives you a hope, that gives you a fair amount of leeway.
Let me ask a question, maybe David can answer. Because normally, when we go to borrow money, we put it up to bid, we check the lowest bid. You're talking in terms of not a bid deal, we're dealing with a sole source, and I'm not sure if that's allowed.
Who legally do it, yeah.
Except that borrowing is an exempt process under 30B of the general laws.
Okay, I know that David didn't want to address the board this evening, so maybe...
No, I'd be happy to do that.
Sure, okay.
Just a couple of points, Mr. Chair. The arrangement offered by the potential seller is something that we can do legally. We can either go out to bid and pay the 500,000, or whatever the eventual agreed-upon price is, and then pay for the issuance cost and pay for what the interest rate winds up being, which at least, at this point in time, fortunately, the market is very, very favorable to doing a general borrowing at this point. Or we can enter into this type of arrangement. It's unusual, but it has, it certainly can be done, it's legally allowable per mass general law. I was, the town manager requested of me that I just do a quick calculation on a CIF rate, because obviously, something like this would not be, we cannot pay cash for it. We did pay, we did have $786,000 worth of retained earnings in the Water Enterprise last year. We're still awaiting certification this year, but a good portion of that has been spent down. So we'd have to wait for the actual certification of free cash and of retained earnings before we could make that decision. But assuming that we do the installment payment over a 10-year period at $650,000, the CIF rate would be $20.31, based on the $650,000 payment over 10 years.
Per year?
Yes. So that would be a new CIF that would appear in next year's billing. So for water, I believe there's two now, so that would be CIF 3, that would appear if we chose to go that route. Now...
That would be another $5 per quarter, assuming the enterprise fund buys it rather than the town buys it.
That is correct. The town can choose to subsidize any portion of that, if we're buying it for any other purpose.
We almost had citizens mobbing the front steps to drag us out, throw us in the river over the last bills for the CIFs.
That's correct.
Now you're suggesting we stick to the...
Oh, I am not suggesting, I am reporting what the cost would be.
Is it, David?
Don't shoot the messenger.
Is it a good deal, David? I mean, this one is, what, 600 gallons per minute, so that's $1,080 per gallon per minute, and Kinnawson was $500 per gallon per minute? So this is roughly twice Kinnawson, in terms of what we're paying per gallon per minute for water. In terms of the acreage, this comes out to roughly, what, a little over $7,000, $70,000 per acre? Kinnawson came out a little less than $30,000 per acre? So this is more than twice in terms of the cost per acre. So this is an awful expensive proposition, isn't it?
Well, I've got to say, I've got to say, to that point, up to this point, the involvement of the finance department hasn't really been to evaluate the use of the land, or whether or not the purchase of the land is beneficial to the water system. That's something that need, that obviously, is something that almost supersedes price negotiation. The other part of this is, if this is something that the board is interested in pursuing, probably, other discussions have to be, have to take place as to how much we are willing to pay for it, whether or not that this price is the price, and whether or not we are interested in going forward at that point.
I guess what we need to hear from the water department is why this water is worth twice what other water is worth.
As I recall, former superintendent Bumbara was very supportive of this. We could certainly get with the water department and bring forward a report of their opinion as to where that, this piece of land would fit into the entire puzzle when it comes to supplying water to the town of Oxbridge. That would probably be, I would assume that would be very beneficial to the board's discussion and decision as to whether or not to go forward with this acquisition.
Now, Mike, I spoke with Irving before he left about this, I knew it was coming up, and I wanted to know whether the DPW were still in favor of the purchase. He said, yes, they were, and I said, why? And the answer basically was, we don't need it right now, because we have plenty of water capacity, so and so forth. If, if the growth of the town will slow down, you know, like, you know, last two years a peak, you know, stopped, and if it's going to stay that way for a while, and if we don't have a problem with the existing wellfields, then, you know, it is a lot of money. We don't, we don't need it if everything goes right. If, for some reason, either production slows down in the existing fields, or something happens to the water, some of those fields, then it becomes very valuable. The problem is, that in the meantime, it may be developed and not available to us. And that's the quandary we face, and these things always happen in an opportune time.
Did you figure out what the rate would be, the CIF rate would be, if we took the $500,000 cash deal?
Well, it depends on how you do that. If you go to recapture it in a single year, for instance, that would be about $136 per unit, which I think would be a bit problematic. We can, there's other methods that we could certainly look at. You can always talk different terms, not necessarily 10 years, we could go out for five. We could go out for five. I mean, the real, most important part of this, really, is determining between the board and the seller exactly what the purchase price will be. Once we have the idea of what the purchase price is, and maybe this is the purchase price, maybe what's being presented tonight is the price, yes or no, but once we have that, then we could certainly go forward and give you a more full range of options as to what could be considered.
I mean, because just, I mean, my gut looking at the figures is it's $500,000 cash or $650 over 10 years.
And that's a high rate of interest.
Yeah, it is.
So the seller is getting $150,000 bump in price. They're getting an extra $150,000, plus they're getting tax-free interest, plus they're getting a chance to spread their capital gains over 10 years. I see the seller getting so much more of a benefit, just, this is like off the top of my head, than what the town gets for what we have. I guess what I would throw out there is, is there a possibility for the price being $500,000, whether we take it either way? Because you still get tax, you get interest-free, and you get to spread your capital gains, so you still get a benefit at the $500,000.
Well...
You understand what I'm saying? I mean, I guess I'd be interested, if we had to borrow the $500,000 and we borrowed it over 30 years, how much interest would we pay in those first 10 years? Would we pay $150,000 in interest in those first 10 years?
Likely, likely not. But of course, the farther out you spread it, the more interest you're going to pay.
Right, but we can also pay it off early. What I'm saying is if we set it up, it could be more beneficial for us to take the $500,000 for that reason, if we can get really low rates right now, and we may choose for a lock or we could go variable. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If we're not going to pay $150,000 in interest just in the first 10 years...
Well, municipal debt generally is for a fixed period of time. It's generally not callable if it's small enough. This would be considered to be pretty small and therefore non-callable. However, you know, once again, it really comes down to what you're paying, what your principal is. After you have your principal, all the other calculations can be made so we can figure out exactly what the best potential deal for the town is, whether it's dealing directly with a no for Mr. Hutneck, whether it's going out. There's methods that we can employ at that point to figure it out. But generally, over 10 years, you're probably going to realize some savings if we went external, just because the rates are so low right now.
Right, I mean, they're like 2%, even maybe 1.5%. I mean, I was looking at all the bond ratings, except for the exception of New York City, who's offering at 5%, and that's like off the charts at 5%. Everybody else is around 2%, 3% right now.
Well, short-term borrowing is like 1.25% to 1.5%. Long-term is about 3% to 3.5% right now, which is still unheard of. So it's certainly something we could look at, but really just depends on what we're financing.
I would just suggest to the board that we do have a placeholder under executive session here on the agenda if we want to discuss kind of terms and those types of things. I think that those types of discussions are better had in executive session. However, what I would encourage the board to do is ask any questions that may be beneficial to have the answers to prior entering into any, you know, strategy or negotiating discussions. So are there any other questions you may have of the team from the Huttnick?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
If I may respond or give some comment?
Sure.
Yes.
Can you approach the microphone yourself? Can you approach the microphone just so people can hear you at home?
Ms. Robinson, if I may, I think you correctly understand us, that we're giving you a range of options. I mean, if it's appropriate and you feel it's fiscally sound to borrow the money from your lender at 2.5% to 3.5%, that's fine. I mean, that's fine. We would prefer to take the money at time of closing rather than to pay it. But if it's more acceptable to the town from a fiscal standpoint, we can work with you over a period of term. And I'm suggesting that because, you know, there are certain advantages. And we have to remember that it's not, this is not a unique situation to Mr. Hutneck. Anytime you pay interest and you go on, anytime the city or town lawfully pays interest, it is exempt from federal and state tax. So that's something that, you know, we're trying to help work to everyone's advantage here. And federal tax code says, we're not exempting from capital gains. We're not getting an exemption from capital gains, but we are reducing the amount of capital gains paid per year. And then, Mr. Bataski, if I may, just if I may, just sort of give you an idea of values. In 1992, this town paid over $1 million for a wellfield, which is inaccessible only by the road behind Burnett's Mill, and paid $1 million to acquire that property, actually it was $1 million two, and then spent another $1 million to rehabilitate that wellfield. And that was in 1992, $19,000, which was a substantial amount of money. Compared to that, and by the way, the yield, safe yield at that wellfield is similar to the West River yield. So when we're looking at dollars to dollars, I don't think we, you know, I think you're getting a tremendous value from this location here. If we look at 1992, oil, a gallon of oil was 52 cents. I know that because I was looking at my own oil records this afternoon. Today it's 3.59 or whatever it is. So it's a huge, huge difference. In today's dollars, were you to spend and buy the Mumford River wellfield, you'd probably be spending $6 million. You're getting the same output, safe yield, for $500,000. That's a tremendous value. The other item, and I think Mr. Bagdusarian highlights this, the subdivision approval is recent, and at some point in time, the market's going to come back, and the seller does not want, the seller has, even though at times, those of you who know Mr. Hutneck, he can be sometimes bearish, but he does not want to sell that subdivision and remove it from a public water supply. But at some point in time, you know, Fred's 71 years old, he's going to, it's, you know, he's, it's going to be sold. It's not something that, you know, he's going to keep in inventory because he's an older gentleman, and both he and Gary are going to have to do something with that location. So this is an appropriate, this is an appropriate time to act. I think, are there any other comments, Mr. Chairman, that I can help with?
I think that the, and Mr. Coe probably can't shed light on it, but I think that Peter kind of spoke to it. I think it would benefit this board to hear from the water department on their take on this particular well. Because even if it is a good deal, if, you know, it may be a good deal to buy a new car, but if you're not going to use that new car, then it's really not a good deal to buy it if it's never going to be driven. And that's kind of the philosophy is, you know, what is, I think that that's something that we need to look at, is what is the intent for the future of the town? We know that Larry was good at planning out for the 10, 15, 20, 25-year plan, but I'd be interested to know, in his, in his future plan for the town of Oxbridge, are we even on mark with what his plan, or are we five, 10 years even off from his plan? So what he thought we needed in 10 years, we really aren't going to need for 20 years down the road. I think that that would be important to know. Yes, we may miss an opportunity, but then again, if we're not going to potentially even need this wellfield for 15, 20, 25 years from now, there may be other water sources that could become available at another time for the town.
Well, that's hard to anticipate. I don't know what other water sources are going to be available, because what happens over time is they tend to diminish because of construction and DEP regulations. It wasn't always that you had to have 400 feet of radius around the well, but that's what the requirements are now. So, I don't know.
The challenge is, they're not making any more land, and they're not making any more vacant land, you know, and there's an opportunity in front of the town, and what this board and what the town will do at town meeting is evaluate kind of the risk-reward equation and figure out what makes the most sense. And that's going to have to be coupled with a dose of reality as to what the rate pair is already bearing, you know, for the recent improvements to the water and sewer system. And that's the challenge that, you know...
And it's unfortunate because in all probability, if we buy this, the people who are going to pay the money are not going to be the same people who will enjoy the benefit of it in the future. You see? It makes it tough.
Well, and I think, and I think to that point, I guess I'll throw out there then, is it possible that if this land is then purchased, because it may never, this well may not be used for 15, 20, 25 years down the road, and if that's the case, then why are the CIF rates paying to buy this when they're not using it right now? Wouldn't this then be a purchase directly from town funds? Because it's something, it's a piece of property that the town is owning for the future. It's not directly related to water and sewer at the present time, because there's no plans to develop it.
Well, it's even further removed from the interest of people who are not on the water and sewer today or will be on it in the future.
But you don't know that.
So if the people on this system don't want to pay the price, why should we ask people like myself, who are not on the system, will never be on the system, to pay the price? I mean, your argument is valid, except in the second step of it.
Well, but you could take it this way. What you could then, at the time that the well is developed, then that is when you could go back and you could, in a sense, have the CIF rates buy the property then at that point from the town and reimburse the town fees.
But I'm dead by then.
Well, I may be dead by then also, so why should I...
I'll still be here, Peter. I'll be here. Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I know that the board has other things to move on to tonight, and all of your points are very good points. Mr. Bataski raises a good point, but I do think 1992 is an interesting, you know, valuation comparison. And Ms. Robinson, you raise a very good point also, but I think we have to realize that DEP requires so much radii around the wellhead. There aren't, and there just aren't any other sites, or if they are, they're very hidden in the town of Oxbridge, where you actually find an aquifer underground that's capable of producing safely 600 gallons a minute. Now, safe yield means that the well can produce for 20 years. And to find that in 20 years in this town is going to be very, very difficult, if not impossible. And if you do, you're not going to pay $500,000 for it. I mean, the price, I mean, it's just the time value of money. Despite what we're seeing all around us today, I mean, time and money have a strange relationship, and, you know, these things are going to go. So, I mean, I think this is an appropriate time now for the board to act. We're willing to work with the board to, you know, arrange a comfortable method for you to pay for this, because I think that, you know, we have some, you know, Mr. Hutneck has made his living in this town and has some concerns about, you know, a very civic-minded obligation to preserve this for the town.
Bruce?
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and stop this and take up an executive session.
Okay. What I'd like to suggest is that we do convene an executive session, discuss this at a high level, but also before we make any decision as to strategy, wait to get an assessment from the water department.
I think it's a good idea. I think that's, I think it's a very good idea.
There's one further thing to consider. My understanding is that we may be on line for a grant to pay for the canosin field. And it's my understanding that that grant comes along every year. We appropriate the money for the canosin field? We did, didn't we?
We've got a...
Yes, well, we appropriated the money. And are you aware of the grant? We're supposed to get some DEP?
I haven't heard about, about whether we have to receive it.
Okay, but it is in the works.
It's been submitted.
Okay. If we get that, then that will pay for most of the canosin field. So it may not turn out to be additional borrowing. When do we expect to hear from that?
Can I be heard, sir?
I don't know anything. I don't know the timeline.
Those grants come around every year. So if we do or don't get the canosin one, there'll be another one available next year. I'll just throw this out while Mr. Poe is here. It may be possible to negotiate something where for some sum of money, not large, Mr. Hutneck will agree not to do anything for a year to see what happens with another grant go around. It's just something to consider. I know he's waited a long time.
No, no, and I appreciate that, and I think it's a good thought. I think there are all types of ways that we can handle this, and as the board knows, I serve as town council in one other town, and I'm special counsel in five other towns in Worcester County and Bristol County. So I'm very much familiar with the budgetary process in towns and 30Bs and all of that stuff. I'm happy to enter into like a workshop with a member of the board of selectmen and see if we can just hammer out something that's agreeable. I mean, it's something that's a comfortable fit for the seller and that's comfortable for the town. I'm happy to do that. I don't think now is the most appropriate time. You have other things to do, and you need to discuss stuff in executive session. That's fine with me. That's a good idea. But I think to keep the process moving for your upcoming fall meeting, I think we just need to be a little more on target now, and I'm happy to make myself available.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so I could, as far as the information from the water department that we'd be seeking, just one of the other things that I'd like to be interested in knowing is the flow of this wellfield? Is it at the south end of the flow?
That's estimated 600 gallons per minute.
No, not the direction, because it's my understanding with the clause, the field that's down by the area where the high school is, that there is another eight-inch well that's even south of that point, and if they start pulling out of that well, it could affect the flow of the town wells.
You're talking about the well that canosin's put in?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that has a direct, that could potentially have a direct effect on the town wellfield. So I would be interested in knowing if there's any potential for a similar situation to occur on this property also. Is there a potential for another wellfield to be, is there already a current pipe there, or is there a situation that could also...
I don't think there's any pipe there, no.
I'd be interested to know if that is a possibility.
Wells over 100,000 gallons have to be approved by the DEP. I think they are considered public water supplies, even if they're not.
Right, it is regulated by DEP, and there is substantial fines if you are pumping from a regulated wellsite without a DEP permit.
Even on your own land? Isn't that amazing?
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm sure the board is familiar with that. That happened to Hood Company.
Yes, yes.
And I think the fines were in the six figures.
Yes.
A big fine.
Yeah, but my understanding is...
I think we have a go-forward strategy as far as our board is concerned, and we'll be back in touch as soon as we can be.
Good, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you very much.
It may make sense to jump ahead to new business relative to the layouts of the roads. I see Mr. Anderson here, actually, and I know he wanted to address the board on a couple of the streets.
You don't want to wait until after the executive session around midnight?
No, absolutely.
Another show?
Good evening. My name is Mark Anderson, Heritage Design Group, representing the Knossen Realty Trust. I'm here before you on a petition, the citizens' petition, to have the Board of Selectmen vote to lay out the extension of Commerce Drive. A few years ago, Commerce Drive and Industrial Drive were accepted as public ways within the town. And subsequently, Commerce Drive was extended about 600 feet, making an additional cul-de-sac, eliminating one cul-de-sac and extending it to another to create five new industrial lots. And the reason for that, the purpose of that was strictly economics. There was more of a need to have smaller lots to satisfy some mid-sized, smaller mid-sized businesses. So, hence, we had five lots and we have five smaller lots, about two to three acres apiece. And then we have one larger lot, which is about 17 acres. And the road has been completed. All the proper paperwork has been submitted to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. And we're going through a final check through the Planning Department office at this time.
Mr. Chairman, what article are we on?
This is Article 33, isn't it?
I believe, yes, it is.
Thank you.
In our package, under New Business, Item 6. I'm sorry, Item A under New Business, rather, I'm sorry. Kim, staff's recommendation is to vote contention and schedule a layout hearing?
Yeah, the town manager's concern was if the board doesn't vote tonight the intention to lay out, it basically stops the process. So, the streets on the list may not actually complete the process, the additional steps. But if the board doesn't take her vote tonight, there's no opportunity for them to do so based on timelines and other, the process between now and call for a meeting.
We have a public hearing scheduled October 22nd with the Planning Board, which is where they will get into the meat of it, final reviews as far as actual construction of the road, how it was built.
And the layout hearing that you'll have, it's supposed to be on the 27th. Is that right?
That's the intention.
Yes.
Does the motion have to make reference to a plan?
There is a plan submitted to you.
I know that, but does a motion to lay out have to make reference to the plan?
I think it should.
Do we have that for all of these, Kim? The plan?
All three plans, actually, I think are on the table upstairs, aren't they?
They weren't...
They were on your table.
They've been submitted. I don't remember where they landed in the past week since I've been gone.
They were. They were.
Yeah, I did see them lay out up there, right.
And again, tonight you're voting the intention to lay out and make public, the second step in the process would then occur on the 27th.
Actually, before we have a motion on anything tonight, the same would be applicable to Article 9, Big Rock Road, and Article 37, Casey Court and Gary Lane, right?
Correct. I'm sorry, yes, for each of the ones.
So, it would make sense to, if we're gonna make a motion, since really it's the same sentence, it keeps the process moving along until we go through the hearing process. Okay?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to vote intention for, let's see, to vote intention and schedule a layout hearing for October 27th for Big Rock Road, for Commerce Drive, for Casey Court, and for Gary Lane?
So moved.
No, wait a minute, no. Say that again.
Okay. I move that we vote our intention and schedule a layout hearing for October 27, 2008, for Big Rock Road, Commerce Drive, Casey Court, and Gary Lane.
Okay, so we're gonna have a hearing?
Yes.
On the layout?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Planning Board has a hearing October 27th.
Planning Board has it.
Yeah.
But the Board of Selectmen doesn't have a layout hearing, do we?
We're just voting to schedule such a hearing on the 27th.
Following the Planning Board's public hearing, it comes back before the board for another vote to accept the vote.
Two separate hearings, Planning Board then back to your...
And we have a hearing?
We have to have it on the 27th.
Timing-wise, and speaking with the Director of Planning and Economic Development, yes. Because there's a timeline, a certain number of days. The hope is that the Planning Board will meet on the 22nd. They will be able to turn around the report with their recommendations for you to have an advance.
And if they don't make a favorable recommendation, there's essentially no reason for us even to hold a hearing.
That's right.
And this is also gives time between now and then. If any of these streets have not submitted all pieces that are necessary for the proper work, any of the plans of documentation, if that's not done between now and then, obviously, the second part would not necessarily happen.
But we're clear that we need a second hearing?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, fine.
It's a two-part process on the board's part with other steps required in between, action by other boards is required in between those two steps.
Right, so we vote on intention and we hold a hearing, are two steps with the Planning Board in between. And other, and distributing.
I'm second.
I'm second. Any further discussion? Call for vote, call of favor?
Mine. With that, you have all these Big Rock Road and Commerce Drive.
Yes. Let's jump into Item C, formal annual town meeting warrant, discuss motions and vote recommendations. I'm sorry, did you want to say something, Kim?
Mr. Chairman, can I just hand out, this is a copy of the zoning map. This was provided by the Director of Planning and Economic Development. She's actually marked the articles. She's mapped the articles that relate. I'll just hand it out and listen.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to take them out of order, I think we have someone that wants to speak to Articles 31 and 32.
Sure. That's fine. Sorry.
Michael Burnat, 46, Taft Hill Lane. I'm here to speak on Articles 31 and 32. And I'm not gonna read the articles. I'm sure you're all familiar with them already, that you've looked at them. I am just gonna mention to you that the purpose of this is to basically reestablish the Board of Public Works that was in place prior to the charter. So that there is a group of people whose sole purpose is to focus on the water system and highway department and all of its complexities. Basically, it would be an elected three-member board. Do it help and assist the public works supervisor in capital improvement decisions, maintenance projects, and any other matters, as well as bring a user's perspective into the decision-making. And I think that, you know, based on some of the things you've heard tonight, I think it's a, it's a good thing to consider.
I would just caution the board in the town, as we look at the language of these articles, to make sure that, you know, that they address the proper way in which charter changes are made. Because specifically where it affects the way people are elected and which positions are elected and are elected, there are certain, you know, processes and procedures you need to follow to make changes. You know, for example, I've been a proponent in the past of a recall provision, adding a recall provision to the charter. And since that directly affected the way, you know, members could be elected to this board specifically, or actually any elected board, there was a certain procedure to follow. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, that the town and everyone is aware that there is a very specified process as to how elected, you know, changes to the charter that affect elected positions are implemented.
And this would take effect January 1st, 2000?
And there are actually several different ways that can happen. You know, there are several different processes by which that can take place. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, if they're requesting that this be going to effect on January 1st, does that mean therefore we would have to hold a special town election?
It may. And the State Secretary's office may not even rule that deadline as to be, you know, a legal deadline. So, I think that remains to be determined as to, as to when that type of change can be implemented and what the ramifications are.
Okay, but just so it's clear to the public that there is a potential that it could cost, if it was found to be legal and they did choose a date, whether it was January 1st, February 1st, December 1st, that it could hold the town responsible for an occurring of fee for a special town election.
Right.
Okay.
Should I go in order now?
Are we going to vote on this one? Or have you heard him or just taken a normal?
Yeah.
Need Mr. Burnat to stay around?
I don't think so.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Burnat?
Actually, Mr. Burnat, I do have one question. Given that, is it for that? Actually, if I could ask you a question. Were you aware of that at the time that you chose January 1st? That it could possibly push the town into a position where we would have to hold a special election? And elections generally, just so everyone's aware, cost what, $6,000 to $7,000? Over seven? Okay.
Actually, I wasn't aware that it was gonna cost the town money to have a special election.
So, I guess my question would be then, now knowing that fact, would the citizens' petition be open to a motion on the floor to adjust that so that a special town election would not be required in order to bring elected officials into that board if so passed by town meeting?
I'm really not sure. I hadn't thought of it.
You wouldn't even need to change your article. When you make the motion, you just change, I move that blah blah blah. You know, instead of saying January 1st, you could say with the next regularly scheduled town election.
Right, right. That's what I'm asking, is whoever is gonna stand up to speak to that, would that be something that...
That would certainly make a lot more sense than, I think, you know, being easier sell to the town than to require a special election to implement it.
If you want to have staggered, you know, you're gonna have a three-member board?
Yes.
So, presumably, you'd want one elected each year. So, you'd have one position for one year, and one position for two years, and one position for three years. But there are three-year positions from then on in. But you have, that has to be part of the motion if that's what you want to do.
That's it here. Yeah, I think that's it.
It's in the article.
It is.
That part was, but the actual when it began.
Yeah.
Right, so...
We can, that can start in May.
But I'd just throw that out first.
That's a good catch, Carrie, that's...
Thank you.
Okay, Article 1 reports. I don't know that there's any recommendation that the board needs to make on this article. Article 2, budget amendments. Any commentary on the motion? Pretty standard. And I believe, was it your request, Mike, that these items were broken up into different groups from one table? We initially had one table, I believe. I think you had requested to break it up by operating area. What's the board's pleasure relative to our support? And we will have at least one more meeting prior to town meeting where we could weigh in with our support and on support of any particular article. If you don't feel you have enough information this evening to...
Well, in the assumption that the numbers are not going to change over the next two weeks, I move that the board voted support for Article 2.
Is there a chance the numbers are going to change?
Oh, you can be surprised. We're on here.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, then would it be best just to pass over this now?
I think so. Just historically, over the last couple of years, these early item articles do tend to, you know, come down almost to the last, you know, week before the town meeting. And we're tweaking numbers and that kind of thing. So, it probably would make sense.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Similar sentiment on Article 3 then, as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, the numbers are finalized? Article 4, appropriations for collective bargaining agreements. We have had a request. I will let you know that the police union would like to have mediation hearings. So, we do need to arrive at some dates. The town manager contacted me today with some dates. It was the 10th, the 14th, and the 15th in the morning, right?
For about an hour.
For about an hour. So, could the board be available for the 14th or 15th?
Yeah.
Is it the board or the negotiating?
Yeah.
They're about to meet.
Okay.
Four.
You're talking October?
Yes.
Okay.
Next week.
What are the dates?
The 14th or 15th. And we're suggesting like 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM?
I'm here anyway.
Either one's okay?
How about the 14th?
Doesn't matter.
14th?
Bruce or Carrie have a preference? 14th? Which better for you? How about you, Carrie?
It'll be a lot easier for me, 14th.
14th's actually better for me as well.
Okay. 10 o'clock?
From 9:00 to 10:00? But we're waiting for Carrie to check her.
That's fine.
Okay. So, I would suggest that we hold off on this article until...
So, the 14th, what time?
9:00 to 10:00?
9:00 to 10:00?
9:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
Yeah, the town manager asked that we time box it to roughly an hour.
I'll confirm location. I believe it's Police Department. I'll let you know.
Okay.
And we know that we're near on the SEIU.
Right. It's all communications today. There was still some work to do on that one as well, so... And actually, I believe we may want to discuss a couple of those items in executive session in this meeting as well, on the SEIU negotiation. Okay. Article 5, funding request to retrofit a forest fire truck. It's board's pleasure on this?
We don't know where it's coming from yet. There's nothing in the motion.
Correct.
Right.
Are we supposed to fill that in, or...
We need to fill it in for the vote.
Before we do, right before the vote. But we, has free cash been certified?
The Finance Committee would be able to answer that.
Where is it? Where is it?
Not likely. Not at this date, no.
So, Mr. Chairman, would it be better for us to wait to see?
I believe so, yeah. It's typically second or third week of October you get free cash certified. Article 6, funding request for matching funds for federal grant award for replacement water tender tanker truck. And, you know, it's all some digital communication today via email relative to the motion, right, Carrie?
Correct. But again, I mean, should we just, well, actually, take that back. The finance, my understanding is that the Finance Committee is going to be there tomorrow.
Yeah, they're gonna be meeting tomorrow.
I guess then we should speak to some of this just for that purpose. But again, the funding mechanism will be an issue on it.
Okay. I'm not comfortable that the motion language is complete yet as in our packets, I mean, and if everyone's not had a chance to read through the email that came out with this afternoon, then we probably should table this one as well.
Correct, right.
All right, we're over 6 so far here.
Hey, hey.
Well, Mike wants us out of here by 10:00 from now on, so we're hustling.
Good idea.
Yep. The question was target for free cash certification, and because, like, right now, a number of articles do not list a funding, a funding source, or a funding source. Article 5, for example, transfer from branch account. All right, and just want to give a sense for that.
The anticipation...
See, how are you doing it now, Tim?
Right now, is the fact that it would probably be funded from free cash, but it's preliminary to say that because we don't have a free cash figure yet. We have submitted everything as required to the Department of Revenue. It went in a little over a week ago, generally it's a two-and-a-half to three-week turnover before we get it back, so we're hopeful that we'll be hearing something, a target date that we've set is October 20th. So we're hopeful we'll get it all back at that point, but right now, there's nothing we can do, it's all been submitted to the Department of Revenue.
Have we voted for a classification hearing? Have we done that yet?
No, that comes after the fall town meeting, after the budget's set, and after we said we'd do the recap. So that'll be, that'll be happening in late November.
Okay. So we have the same situation for Article 5 and Article 7?
Yep.
So you stay with us for a few minutes here?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Article 8, Street Acceptance, Southwoods Estate Subdivision. Motion, move Arnold Way to be accepted in its entirety. Motion B, move that Southwoods Drive is to be accepted in its entirety. Now, again, these are broken down into two separate motions because they are two separate streets in the same subdivision, right? And it's conceivable that town meeting may want to accept one but not the other, so we're pre-dividing the question already.
That's why, that's why the motion's in this way.
Right, the motion's in this way.
With past practice in that meeting.
Just for clarification, you entered that subdivision on Southwoods Drive, and then Arnold Way is the finger off of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Article 9, Street Acceptance, Big Rock Road, we actually, on Number 9 and the other two articles, we just voted to have the layout hearings as well, so we can vote our positions on all those at that point.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, can we just go ahead and, can we vote Article 8 and get that out of the way, since it's not waiting for anything further?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
At least tack to something.
The planning board may be providing a report on that, so it's whether or not you wish to wait until you have a report from the planning board.
It would be good practice, I think.
Just doing subject to planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
That way we get it off the table.
Right, one down at least, right? Okay. So we have a motion for favorable recommendation on Article 8, motions A and B, subject to planning board approval. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First?
I have a question.
Oh, you did?
My question was, if the planning board came back unfavorable, then would we re-vote if we didn't, if they gave a recommendation we didn't like?
Subject to approval.
Oh, their approval, so if they don't approve, then our vote automatically goes to them.
Right, right.
Okay, yes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
You have to throw something at me sometimes, it's going to stop me in one of them. So Article 9, we're going to hold off because we're waiting on the process to play out. Article 10, same kind of thing, right now, pending executive session and update from the Water Department and potential negotiations. Article 11, Massachusetts Electric Company Easement. Were prepared to take action on this one tonight?
Yeah, we, I moved that we vote recommendation, positive recommendation.
Second.
Article 11. Any discussion necessary? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Now, has Mass Electric prepared the easement? I think I saw him on...
We presented it maybe a month and a half, two months ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will have it at town meeting.
Article 12, Borrowing Recision, Balance of Tithes, School Authorization, again, this is just one of the housekeeping things we've been doing over the last couple of town meetings to clean up kind of debt that's hanging out there, even though it's encumbered...
It's authorization, it's not...
It's an authorization, it's not from borrowing.
But the project's concluded, so we don't need it.
Okay. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
For positive recommendation?
Positive recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's a 5-0 vote.
Same thing on 14.
13.
13.
13 and 14.
And 14. Both in one fell swoop. Okay, so have a motion on 13 and 14, favorable recommendation?
Favorable, move favorable recommendation of Articles 13 and 14.
Bruce, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 15, I think there's still a lot of discussion going to be had on this one, we should hold off until...
Yeah, they're having the meeting on 14th, is that correct?
Yes, right. Article 16, Funding Appropriation of Cable Access Studio at Uxbridge High School, don't believe...
Oh, no numbers are in there.
Yeah, we don't have the numbers yet. Article 17, Funding Appropriation of Cable Access Funds, how's this different? Oh, I'm sorry, one was the studio, one was the funds. And this, we do have, I think, all the information that we'll need. So I have a motion on this?
Move a positive recommendation on Article 17.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 18, Transfer Funds to FLY 09 Council on Aging Budget, we do not have the from account noted here yet. Is that correct, Amy?
That's correct, and it would be free cash.
Okay, so we'll hold pending certification to free cash.
It actually comes down to a little less than $8,000 to restore services?
Although...
Article 19, Acceptance of Statutes Relative to Certain Subdivision's Surety. I believe this is going to require, does this require planning board?
Yeah, it's planning board.
Yeah, sponsors from the planning board. I'm going to have a map for now.
Simple majority.
Same thing with 20? Mm-hmm. Same thing for 21, 22, 23, 24. Okay, Article 25, Zoning Bylaw Division Relative to Accessory Uses and Structuress.
This is very interesting.
I was going to say that.
Because our previous zoning bylaws had good language on accessory uses. When they redid it, they messed it up. So now we have five pages of fixing up something that they messed up that was previously handled in about one paragraph.
It doesn't even seem to be in layman's terms.
Well, it is.
It is, but it's not, I mean...
It's muddled.
Correct.
It's muddled.
Round with the room.
You have prohibited accessory uses. Now, if a use is prohibited, it's prohibited.
Right, how can be...
It's irrespective of whether it's a major use or a...
Right.
And you can't possibly list all the accessory uses. For instance, you have a picnic table outside. The bylaw doesn't say you can have a picnic table outside. Now, the previous bylaw didn't need to say that, because the previous bylaws had in it the Bill of Rights, which said, in the town of Uxbridge, any lawful use of land or buildings is allowed unless specifically prohibited. The new bylaws have just the opposite, and the new bylaws are written in a way that they said the old bylaws were, but they were wrong, they never understood the old bylaws.
The final bit on permitted accessory structures in Section B, swimming pools, game courts, and the like are accessory structures and shall comply with codes and applicable setback When I was living in Virginia, it became very popular with some of the families to get these basketball things, it's a pole on a heavy base that's wheeled, and it has a hoop, and you can wheel it out, and the kids can play basketball in the afternoon.
Right.
And they tried to apply setback restrictions on where you can place, it's the like, it's the like, it's game courts and the like, subject to setback restrictions.
Oh, God.
And they tried that once, and the homeowners association got together and said, "This is the dumbest thing in the world, we're not going to enforce it." But that's the sort of thing you come up with when you have something written this way. It is, those types of basketball hoops would fall under this provision, subject to setback requirements. So if they put it too far forward in their driveway for the kids to play basketball in the afternoon, and frankly, I'd rather have the kids out there playing basketball than doing something, you know, less wholesome. So this is dumb.
But if you don't honor the setback, when you miss your shot, your ball goes in your neighbor's yard.
Yes, it does, it does, yes, and your neighbor might complain to the zoning enforcement officer, "The setback caused that ball to come."
And look at the home occupation. A home occupation may be allowed as a right, provided that it, now it says "may be allowed as a matter of right." A contradiction in terms, it's either a lot of matter of right, or it may be allowed, but this says it may be allowed as a matter of right, providing it's conducted solely within a dwelling and solely for the person occupying the dwelling as a primary residence. Now, I have a house in a detached garage, and I want to weave baskets, it's a home occupation, because I have some reeds in the back, so I can dig and strip and so forth. Now, I wouldn't be allowed because it's not conducted solely in the dwelling, I'm doing it in the garage. This is how ridiculous it is. And have you all read the AG's letter regarding...
I tried to.
Well, I read it, but you can't read it unless you have the AG's letter, the current zoning bylaws, and our prior zoning bylaws. And what you find is, the issues that the AG's office raised were also in our prior bylaws, little inconsistencies, they went outright, you know, disallowed, but the things that you can't really do. So in this process, where they said they were going to clean up things that were in conflict with laws and so forth, they didn't, because the things that we had there are still there, but they added many more unique things. And it goes to show you, you know, how many times have we heard about all the work that's been done? They hired a very prestigious lawyer, and they worked hours and hours on these things, and had many hearings, yet, look at what you have. A few months after the adoption, they had seven pages of amendments.
I personally would like to hear your planning board's comments and their position on this, before I'm ready to weigh in, I think.
Well, we were told that the zoning board was the prime mover of all these bylaws, zoning bylaw changes. So wouldn't we want to hear from the zoning board?
Well, if they sponsor it.
Yeah, so if they sponsor it...
Still, you know, I think we'd like to hear from the planning board as well.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
The planning board had hearings on these, and they were, I mean, I watched several evenings when they were going through.
Yeah, I don't know that they've taken their vote, though.
But they were, they spent, I know they spent a lot of time looking at the home occupation, because I even raised an issue, one point, as I was sitting at home taking notes when they were talking, I came in before one of our meetings, because I couldn't be in two places at once, and raised a question regarding 3A, when they were talking about renting a room, because they limited it to, you can rent a room as long as it's not more than two persons in a dwelling unit, and I raised the question of, well, what happens if it was a four-bedroom house? You would have to apply for a special permit to rent out three of your rooms to three separate friends.
It's better than that, because remember, the definition of a family, we're all individuals. So we're all one family here, this is the '82 Main Street family. And, you know, family members contribute to the cost of running the family, so there's nothing wrong with that. What was that phrase, "Oh, the tangled web we weave when first we set out to deceive."
Twenty-six, home, excuse me, Home Rule Charter Amendment, elected Board of Health, and this article essentially changes the Board of Health from appointed to elected. And my comments I made earlier, just about, you know, charter changes relative to the election of positions would stand up there here as well. There are a couple ways that the charter can properly be changed, just to make sure we, you know, if any of these motions pass, that we follow the appropriate processes. But the last thing you want is people to walk out of town meeting thinking that charter changes is imminent, and we don't follow the correct process to actually have an act on it, so.
I'm in favor of the change of the concept.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I moved that the board support Article 26, Home Rule Charter Amendment, elected Board of Health.
A second.
Am I missing it?
I'm sorry, two seconds.
Am I missing it, or does it, when would, they don't have a timeframe, from what I can tell, so they would be going along with normal...
Well...
Normal election time?
It's not in the motion, I called Susan Smith and let her know that what they have to do in the motion to affect the change.
Okay, so, okay.
They'll do it.
So she's aware of it.
What date did you use?
Date for what?
For the election.
Well, I didn't, I just said, you know, she needs to give consideration to when they want this to take effect, and how they're going to elect the first people, and also address the issue, whether the current people will stay in office until...
I was saying, Tom, you shared earlier, on the other...
Right, that's it, right, that they're aware, right.
They stay in office until the election.
But they'll have to do that in the motion.
Because I would, you know, I wouldn't like to see the town in the position where one passes for January 1st, and another one passes for March 1st, and the next thing you know, we're having four or five special elections through the spring, because not everybody's on the same page.
Right.
And it's costing $7,000 every time one occurs.
We had one year where we had, how many town meetings and special elections, and it was like eight or nine in Spanish, a while once, I think, it was crazy.
Motion and second?
Yeah, any other discussion, you know, pros and cons of... Yeah, any other discussion, you know, pros and cons of an elected person appointed Board of Health?
I understand why they're doing this, and I highly recommend we-
And what are your thoughts for your support?
Well-
Just kind of curious, I mean, I've heard all your arguments both ways, as to, you know, why an elected Board of Health is better, and why an appointed one is better.
Could someone just verbalize the pro and con that they've heard?
Well, the Board of Health, as far, the way I see it, wants to be in charge of itself. They don't want anybody in charge of them. That doesn't really have anything to do with them. Well, of course, under the charter, they, no one is in, quote, "in charge of them" as it relates to their, you know, their statutory functions. But we know that it's different, Peter. Yeah, sometimes it can happen that way. However, keep in mind, um, since we went from elected to appointed, the people who are there today were the same people who we've been elected. Oh, right. So you can't make the case that we had bad people in other departments, and then we threw them out and got real good people. Oh, no, that's not what I mean, though. That's not what I mean. And the other thing is, that, I like elected, I like the ability to vote someone in or vote someone out. I like that. And if I'm going to delegate it to somebody, I want to delegate it to somebody who I believe is better, in a better position to make a choice than I am. And for the life of me, I can't understand why someone we hired from someplace, generally not from within the town, is somehow endowed with superior ability to choose people to hold offices that are going to affect my life. If somebody can say, "Well, if you're born in Southbridge, then automatically you have a better sense of people's character and abilities and competence," but I don't see any such evidence.
But the flipside argument is that by making them elected positions as opposed to appointed positions, um, you know, the average Joe on the street, was it Joe Sixpack that was in the debate the other night? May or may not know what the Health Department even does, where a qualified town manager has a better sense of what these individual positions, and there are, you know, a couple of these types of articles here, what they do. So that's the argument, that's the flipside argument. One is put it out to the people-
Right.
And the other is, put it in the hands of a professional who, you know, understands, you know, what these positions entail, and who the best can, so.
Yeah.
So that's just flip side. I'm just trying to share with you both sides of the argument.
If that were a good, if that were true in reality, that I would expect to see managers coming into a town, new town, where previously they were elected, and looking at the situation and say, "Aha, we have two people in the Board of Health who are elected, and they're really no good, I'm going to get rid of them. There are three people on the planning board, they're elected, and they're obviously not, I'm going to get rid of them." But I never see that happening. And if we look at the people who are appointed, who are appointed, people that raise a hand and say, "Hey, I want to be on that." Okay, you're on that. It's not, it is because they don't have a line of people banging on the door, saying, "I want to be on the ZVA, I want to be on the, of this or that commission." And there are people who are willing to do something in the town, but would rather get their authority from the people of the town rather than a manager. And I personally talk to people and say, "Why don't you, like, no, 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 if I'm going to do something, I'm going to want to be elected by the people of Oxbridge. I don't want to be beholden to a manager. I want to be beholden to the people of Oxbridge."
Now, you know, the question I have is, I don't believe, since, first of all, since these positions are currently appointed-
Right.
All right, I don't believe the charter addresses what you do in the case of a vacancy. Right? Neither does this article address what you do in the case of a vacancy. Like, for example, in the case of vacancy of a town manager, the board of selectmen will do the following.
Yeah.
You know, lays it out. This article doesn't address that. The implication, though, is special election to fill the seat. There is no appointing authority specified in the article that says, "Here's what happens if this position goes away," or if someone resigns, or gets sick, or whatever the case may be. So that certainly is weakness in this particular, I'm not picking on this article again, you know. But it has to be taken into the whole context of, now, do we now have a hole between what's addressed in the charter and what's addressed, uh, here, relative to what happens in the case of a vacancy? I know that there's a blanket statement that says, "In the case of, you know, a vacancy that's not otherwise addressed, here's the process by which that vacancy is filled."
Well, I know under state law, for instance, the school committee, we have vacancies. The school committee and the board of selectmen jointly appoint someone to fill the position. And how would you know? Is there a blanket state law that covers that for other elected positions?
Let's see, the library-
Library trustees have a service.
-had that argument for a long time-
Yeah.
-and then finally yielded to the state law-
Okay.
-which is, it is, a person is, you're filled with vacancies by appointing someone chosen by the board of selectmen and the board, whatever happened.
Okay, so it's generic, no matter what?
Yeah, to fill the-
Unexpired, true.
Uh, I think it's the unexpired.
Yes.
Okay.
So there is provision to-
And that's not a bad policy. I would prefer it to be to fill, fill the vacancy until the next annual election-
Yeah.
-in which you then elect someone for the unexpired term.
Yeah.
Get the state law to-
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly, I understand.
I just got to say-
That, to me, would make more sense, that you make an interim appointment, you know, the board of selectmen and the-
It is, until the next election. It's not the unexpired term.
I have to go over the law, I-
No, I think it's until the next election. And that's why you have people serving for a one-year. For instance, um, we have two members here who are serving the unexpired term.
But they were elected to those seats for that period of time.
That's the election period. People in fact-
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
They weren't appointed, they weren't appointed by-
To a one-year term, which is to be, uh, which expires at the end of the year after their election.
I don't think so.
Even though it's a normal three-year term.
The state law says? I don't think so.
Well, I have to go to, I have to go over here.
We should double check that, just so, you know, guaranteed the situation will come up if we're not, you know.
But there is, there is a provision to handle vacancies on boards.
Just, just so unclear, does the, right now, the Board of Health, they have written bylaws, procedures?
They have by, they have regulations.
They have regulations, right, they are governed by regulations and bylaws.
Right.
And state law, no, they don't, it's not bylaw, just regulations and state law they're governed by.
But that is, they have their own local Board of Health regulations.
Correct.
Which, by the way, have more pages than, I don't know about the new bylaws in town, but the Board of Health regulations comprise more pages than all the general bylaws of the town of Oxbridge, and the zoning bylaws of the town of Oxbridge, and the planning board regulations, and the DPW regulations combined.
I guess where I was confused in my thought process, I'm thinking, the Board of Health stuff is within our general bylaws.
No.
If you pull up.
No.
But there's a section in our general bylaws that regards the Board of Health.
No. Except as to, you know, there is a Board of Health, I think, mentions that, or it may not. But no, that the statutory position, for instance, there's nothing in our bylaws that talks about-
What they do.
Uh, what they do. None of our bylaws talks about the tree watering, except that, you know-
Same thing with the conservation.
Conservation commission.
Right, but they're, they're, okay. I, I could have swore there was, like I said, I was reading all the things about the Board of Health and forces, and it's within our general bylaws. So those are bare regulations, and we've just put them in our bylaws?
No.
As a place to find.
No, the Board, you see the Board of Health, for instance, in certain aspects of our bylaws, um, oh gee.
Because they talk about-
Well, in the, um-
They talk about-
Under Aquifer bylaw that we passed, that there's special districts, some of the Board of Health is mentioned there, because the Board of Health has to approve things and so forth. That's why you-
Okay, that's where I'm seeing, because you're seeing, right, you're seeing Board of Health has to issue approval.
Yes.
Um, I guess then, my question is, is if they have regulations, and they have law, then isn't that their governing power? That is what tells them their charge and what they're supposed to be doing.
But that's not what this article discusses. This article only discusses how they end up in their seat to do those-
Correct, but isn't the, I mean, isn't the reason why they don't want to be appointed anymore is because they want to make their own rules? And I guess I'm a little confused.
No. No.
They want to be their own boss, but their boss is the regulations.
That's right, that's right.
So who, so I guess my, why does it matter if they're appointed or elected if their boss is the regulations? That's what they're enforcing.
Because even though, both under state law and our charter, the charter specifically says that statutory boards have all the powers given to them by state law, by charter, by bylaw, and so forth. We know that as far as a building inspector went, Floyd Foreman first, and now Megan most recently, would tell him, you know, "Deny this permit, don't give this permit." They had no authority at all to do that, but they did do that. And that has caused no end of problems.
I understand it, but that's not-
A lot of cost for the town.
But I guess my point is, is how would that change it if it's an elected board?
Because nobody-
They could still come in and do the exact same thing.
Yeah.
If the person sitting in the seat doesn't have, doesn't stay, "No, stop, you have no authority here." It doesn't matter if they got in that seat because they were appointed, or they got in that seat because they were elected.
Yeah.
You can still have the same individual coming in and telling them what to do.
Technically, you're correct, except, again, they're appointed by the manager, not elected by the people. So if you know that the manager wants you to do X or Y, you can say, "No, I'm not going to do it, because, you know, that's my job." But then you have to say to yourself, "Gee, am I going to be reappointed?" Whereas if I'm elected, my authority comes from the people of the town.
And then I guess my question would be, is, is there a case where someone has been removed by a town manager in Oxbridge because they did not follow the direction of the town manager on a town manager appointment?
I don't know.
Or are these individuals, you know, I mean, I understand what I'm saying, I mean, are they-
And I don't think that, you know, I don't know of any such instance. However, let me tell you how human beings work. I meet tons of people in the normal course of my, my life, that I, they feel they're being mistreated by some official. And I say, "Listen, you're absolutely right, they shouldn't be doing this to you. You should go back and say that." "Well, I don't want it, because they'll be after me in other things." That's how it works, that's life.
No, and I shouldn't, I guess I don't understand how it would be any different if you were elected by the people, you spend the money, possibly, because you don't have to spend money to get elected, but let's say you buy the yard signs, you get elected to the Board of Health, and then you have people calling you saying, "I don't like the decisions you're making." So you don't do what you feel the regulations are, because you're afraid you're not going to get elected again. I don't see how it would be any different.
You have some of that, too, except that you have an individual whose only recourse is to not vote for you and to, to encourage others not to vote for you. On the other hand, you have one person with the power of appointment over you, and you have no recourse.
But it's, no, and I understand, Bruce, there's, but you're not always going to have the same people in the position.
No, I know that.
You're not going to have the same town manager, I, we're not going to have the same manager here six months from now. Or you may not have other individuals, um, you know, Megan may not be in her position six months from now. I mean, I understand that.
It's not really Megan or this town manager, another town manager, it's just, that's human nature.
Right, and that's my point, so I don't see-
It's not a black and white. There are arguments on your side.
Right.
You know, I'm not denying that. I had this argument with Courtney a hundred times about, you know, she insisted that the treasurer-collector should be in an appointed position, it's crazy to have this elected position. And I reminded her that when she was elected, she had no experience as a, as a treasurer-collector, none. She walked in, the other person had left, no one was there to help her, but she picked it up, and then everyone said, "Oh, you're great, you're great, you're great." Okay, fine. But she would not have been chosen for that position if it were an appointed position, because she had no experience.
Right, so there could be drawbacks to making this board an elected position.
Of course there are.
Right, we could get-
Yes.
Kind of like similarly ourselves.
Yes.
People get elected to the Board of Selectmen and don't understand-
Yes.
-the regulations behind it.
And we can have presidents, and we have had presidents.
Exactly.
Senators, governors, that's what it is.
So it could hurt.
What are the qualifications to be elected to the Board of Selectmen?
There are none.
Get the most votes.
One more vote than somebody else.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Any qualification to be president in the United States, age thirty-five-
And one more vote than the other.
-an actual born citizen, and one more vote than the next guy, that's it.
So in a sense, if you're looking to get the best qualified people for your boards, appointed boards have a procedure set, procedure that's better equipped to possibly get people who are better suited for those positions, because you submit the talent bank sheet.
I have looked at those talent bank sheets, Carrie.
I know, it's not a foolproof system.
I want to be the kind of board, because I like plant flowers, and I want to make everybody plant flowers in their backyard. Sorry, I don't go along with that.
No, but it's-
I'd like to make, just maybe two comments here.
Sure.
First is, relative to the charter and the powers that are vested in the town manager, and this charter defined a strong town manager, et cetera, I am a hundred percent in favor of allowing those appointments to happen as they happen, okay? You know, and, and not trying to undermine that authority, okay? However, as an overarching philosophy, I believe in empowering people to put, to decide who end up in seats as much as possible, and I believe, you know, to, I guess, the core of my political philosophy, that the people should be voting on and deciding as many issues as possible, you know? And so, for that reason alone, I'm supportive of this. I have issues with, you know, the gap that if, that if someone resigned, doesn't address here how we just have, but, you know, apparently there is a blanket state policy that covers that. You know, I'm supportive of the charter as it stands, but as an overarching political philosophy, I, I, I'm in favor of putting more power in the hands of the people, you know? And I think that the best thing to do is have an informed electorate and let people vote on issues. And that's, that's kind of what I am on these types of things, just my own personal soapbox. So.
Call the vote.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Motion in a second.
Hi, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or abstention, or?
Um, I'll favor it, sorry.
Article twenty-seven, citizen's position to amend the zoning bylaws to rezonal parcel at Douglas Street and West Street from agricultural to industrial. I support its pleasure on this, I, you know, would like to-
I don't see that possible on this map. Am I, aren't they map, aren't they? This is Article twenty-seven. Maybe I'm missing it.
I don't see it either.
Oh, it's not on this map. Okay, this is Route one forty-six. You just got to find Douglas Street. West Street, okay, I can find West Street, it's here. Oh, I see it, it's near number thirty-eight. Yeah, it's colored.
I don't see twenty-seven anywhere there.
No, it's not the, I see the possibility, it must be this possibility, because this is West Street.
The map looks like it's the acceptances.
Oh, okay.
Not everything is in that.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's close up here.
I'm sorry?
It's close. Now, that looks to me as though it's the-
The north?
Possible, is that where AC Tech is?
Mm-hmm.
It's right around there. This is, yeah.
Yeah, didn't somebody come in here and tell us a few weeks back that it was just to make it contiguous with the one that was previously rezoned?
Mm-hmm.
Was to add another bit to the, to the bigger piece that's out there.
I have to look at that.
Oh, it's on the other side.
Oh, is it on the other side?
Yeah, it's opposite, this is on the, it doesn't, it's not contiguous though. There's a road in between.
No, yeah, Douglas Street.
You've got West Street.
It's on the west side of one forty-six, right?
No, on the side of West.
The northeast.
I'm not prepared to weigh in on this, this evening, I don't think.
I think it's where the, is it where the animal hospital is?
No, no, it's farther up.
No.
It's on that, by West Street.
Oh, one, one, maybe not.
The animal hospital, you go into the bridge, it's on the right, you go a little farther up AC Tech, and then you got West Street.
Right, it's that blank, or empty parcel right now, right, just kind of, right.
Oh, where they tore out, there was an old house there.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I know where you're talking about.
I personally need more time, I think, if I can. How about twenty-eight? Same thing? Okay, twenty-nine?
Yeah, let's see if you can come up with that one.
That's the article to rescind the rezonings.
Is that the one you sponsored, Peter?
Yes.
Oh, I guess, Pete, you're taking a simulator when you needed a scalpel.
Say it again?
You're using a simulator when you needed a scalpel.
If you took a scalpel, there'd be nothing left, because I've gone through it, and through it, and through it, and I'm telling you, the more you read it, the more problems you find with it. As I said, when I first talked about this, I think they should be board-sponsored articles, and I submitted this in lieu of that because I didn't think the board was going to do it.
Any other thoughts or discussion? Bruce or Karen?
I think, I think we should be his own enforcement offices, I thought we slipped, he was very above that.
I guess I kind of fall in the same place where Mike is though, in that if there are things that are broken, and there are things that are broken now, let's fix them. But, you know, I think, taken as, the body of work as a whole, it's more good than bad.
Okay, if that statement were true, I would agree with you, Karen. But I don't know on what basis you make that statement. I make it on the basis of understanding what we had before, carefully reading what we have now, and I don't know how you can come to that conclusion.
And, I mean, it's not a scientific conclusion, I mean, I didn't say, well, this page was better in the old bylaws, this is better...
But that's what I do, that's what I do. And what we have is, it's not old or new, you have a vase here, and somebody hit it and it fell on the floor, and it smashed into a thousand pieces. So now you have an option. Normally, the only option you have is to try to put all those pieces together, very time-consuming, and the result is, you're still going to have all those crack marks, even though you have blue. But we have another alternative. We can, as if by magic, reverse the clock, reverse time, and we have the vase as it was before it broke.
I guess the other fundamental issue I have with your argument for this, Peter, is one of the assertions you made several months ago was, we like the old bylaws better because we knew how to get around them. And to me, that's not a suitable argument, why, that's a good thing, to go back to old bylaws, that we know how to circumvent, you know. So, you know, I have trouble supporting wholesale revisions, and just undoing them all, I would much rather use a scalpel. And I'll, if you want to bring half dozen, you know, changes per town meeting, I'd be happy to support that.
I have no interest in doing that. But the point you make is a very good point, a very good point, and let me address it. Go again and read the letter from the AG's office, and look at all those issues they brought up. All of those things existed in our old bylaws. I knew about them, most people who worked with the bylaws knew about those things. For instance, everyone, except a few people on the Board of Selectmen, knew that towns don't have the authority to regulate trade between towns, so you can't tell somebody, you can't sell loom to Menden or to Blackstone, you can't do that, even though it's in our bylaws. So we do those things, and we work around them by, with the knowledge that yes, you can't do that. So the brilliant people that redid the bylaws with this prestigious lawyer left all those things in. They left them all in. So it's not that we're going back to something that had flaws, we still have those flaws in the norm, plus more. But to me, all those things are secondary. The major issue is, they lied, Karen, they lied. Twenty-two times, no substantive changes, just recodification, no, we're not making any big changes. They lied. And I don't allow people to get up at town meeting, officials to get up at town meeting, and flat-out lie that like that. They made changes, they knew there were substances, substantive changes. In two instances, town meeting just recently voted on an issue, and it was, that somebody wanted, it was rejected, and they snuck it in surreptitiously, and didn't even note it as a change. That's not acceptable to me, and it should not be acceptable to the Board of Selectmen. It should not be.
And we should change those things, but again, I, I'm personally not supportive of just doing away with these and going back to the old, but I am supportive of tweaking and changing anything we need to do to fix this.
Well, you know, well, I might criticize the way Peter's going about it, I mean, I would vote, go ahead and do this, I mean, what's the alternative?
I mean...
I mean, what they gave us was a document that's seriously flawed, you know, and we weren't expecting that. Now, I've got to be sympathetic with Mike Wikström's letter to us, reminding us that since we didn't participate in the process and the public hearings and things, we really ought not to criticize the result. I mean, that was the gist of Wikström's letter. That's a good sentiment, I mean, I, it can be frustrating as heck to build a product by committee and then have non-participants come in after the fact and find fault with it, I mean, that's irritating as all heck.
Except for one thing, Mike, except for one thing, I agree with you a hundred percent, except for one very important thing. We were told all along through this process
I really...
there won't be any substantive change, we're just going to recodify, change the paragraph numbers.
Which explains my, my, my attentions to the process.
So why would we go to the hearing?
Yeah, that's why I was not being very attentive.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't like the tactic of throwing the whole thing out rather than trying to change it, but...
But it's not tactic, I don't know either way of doing it, Mike.
This is what we've got in front of, in front of us, I'm inclined to support it.
I, um, the biggest thing I have with it, and it's the difficult thing, is, I look at it this way, I, all you have is your word, and I agree with you, Peter, in that we didn't weigh in on the process, but we felt like we didn't, in a sense, we felt like we didn't need to because we were being told one thing, and when that wasn't the case, then it questions, it's, in my opinion, we're not undoing the whole process, we're coming back and saying, you told us that it was not substantive, it is. So now, go back to where we were, now bring it back to us again, and tell us what the substantive changes are, and spell out why you think that these are needed. That's what we're asking for, we're not taking away the process that went through, we're just asking them not to dismiss the idea of us understanding the process that was going through.
Exactly.
And in all fairness, I know we didn't discuss it, but it's very similar to what's going on in Article Six.
Which is?
Regarding, you know, the meeting we had with the, with the grant writer. It's not that, you know, we didn't talk about it this evening, but it's a similar situation. It's not that we're changing it, but we're explaining because the way that it was presented isn't really the way, the wording does not clearly represent it, and that is the whole point. We don't want this to look like it's something other than it is. Let's tell everybody...